I would have to, I'd like to call the carousel meeting of the U-46, Westford, and Prudential Committee School Boards to order. I'm Jack Balendorf, Chairman of the U-46 Board, and I will officially call our meeting to, our Board meeting order at 6:34.
I'd like to call the Westford Board meeting to order at 6:34.
And I'll call the Prudential Committee meeting to order at 6:34.
What I'd like to do is, is go around the table, Gary will start it, you're in, and just, just say who you are and what boards you're on, okay?
Gary Baker, Conventex, U-46.
I'm Glenn Diggs with Westford.
Scott Coolidge, Westford.
Andre Aridi with Westford.
Martha Heath, Westford.
Cindy Remy, CCSU Communications.
Mark Droppa, Westford.
Jack Balendorf from Essex Junction on U-46.
Charlie Day, Prudential Committee.
Mike Dewey, Superintendent.
Judy De Nova, Associate Superintendent.
Michael Smith, Prudential Committee.
Dave Reister, Prudential Committee.
Marla Durham, Prudential Committee.
Okay, thank you. I want to start this, this evening's carousel meeting with our common topics which include tonight our 2013 VSBA/BSA World Class Education Agenda, and Dr. Dewey, the floor is yours, or Ms. De Nova?
Thanks so much, Jack. We really do appreciate these carousel opportunities to really share some common thinking, common topics with you that really we trust are applicable to all boards, and this has been an important theme that is the culmination of some work that has taken place over the past year. This is a joint effort by your association, Vermont School Boards Association, and my association, Vermont Superintendent's Association, and I can't say enough about your representatives to this effort. Steve Dale, your Executive Director, Nicole Mace, Deputy Director, and four of your board colleagues across the state were absolutely instrumental in, in the quality, in my opinion, of this, this work product. It has certainly gotten some attention, properly so. You may have been aware of the launch press conference, if you will, that took place back in January. I know that in the organizational notes, we pointed you to the Vermont VSBA website that has the print materials relative to this, and what we do tonight is, is just fundamentally do a review of that agenda, and perhaps challenge ourselves to think about, from our own district level, local member district level, where we find ourselves, where we find ourselves positioned, in what areas we might be already making some progress, what areas we haven't really thought that much about yet, and what areas really deserve further attention. So I'm going to pass out a copy of the abbreviated version, and I know this will look familiar to you, and it's coming around in two directions, and this is the nine-page summary document, again, from January 13. Just wait for those to be distributed.
And while Mike's waiting for them to be distributed, I just wanted to have an opportunity to have you think through the lens of how might this agenda be something that those boards who are planning some strategic planning processes might think about how this could get folded into your work plans.
Looks like we're good. The first page of this, and Cindy, thanks for having that up on the, on the screen, speaks to the introduction, and the introduction really addresses these two associations' interests to really deliver on the promise of a world-class educational system. In doing so, it requires definition of what world-class education means, and it's a call to action in many ways for different stakeholders and different constituency groups around what it might take to deliver on that promise. You see in the bottom page five, or bottom page one, rather, the five-point agenda, if you can just scroll down, Cindy, and those five key themes are assurance of success for every student, supporting a new vision for teaching and learning, engaging and supporting families and communities, delivering and using world-class technology, and providing effective leadership. So those are the five big key themes within the, the report itself. On page two, before we talk about the action points, what were your takeaways in those first four paragraphs about what it means to assure success for every student? What does this mean to you as a board member? How do you interpret this, this theme?
Is that an open question?
Please.
Well, I'll go ahead and start us off. Success for every student, at least in my mind, was displayed pretty readily when we were, when we were shown differentiated instruction and how it's implemented at Westford. The concept that each student may have a different starting point and a different ending point is, is a powerful one, and the second portion of that comes from some of the, the work that came from the VSBA Conference last year around multiple pathways. So the ability to display mastery of a subject, perhaps in the past, was, was narrow. You do well on a test, therefore you know the material. Perhaps broadening it now means showing mastery in a practical way, or being able to teach someone else and not necessarily confining it to one form for each student.
Thank you. Others?
Something that shouted out to me was the, the real-world learning opportunities and the equitable access, something that we're doing at ADL, getting everybody computers with now our past budget, our sixth grade can get it, but also, you know, working on the Village WiFi, the equitable access for all students, I think is super important.
Terrific. Any other dimensions you picked up in that first section about assurance of success for every student?
Picked up, as I was putting the students on the top of the pyramid in regards to, that is who we are serving, but foremost, the student is at the top.
It's one of the things that makes me especially proud, Andre, of this supervisor union, and that is the board's clear focus on, on making student-based decisions, student-centric thinking, and couldn't agree more. Jack?
The thing that caught my eye as a board member is the acquiring strategic investments, and what that means as board members as we plan going forward, how we engage our communities and ensure we have, we're on the right path to make those funding decisions and engaging with our communities to make sure that they're supportive of the directions that we want to go in.
Wasn't that long ago in this state that public education was considered grades one through 12? They expanded to kindergarten through grade 12. This calls for the definition to really be inclusive of pre-kindergarten through grade 12, and I think you'll find some, some hallmarks here of really a pre-K through 16 continuing as well. So I think this definition of who it is we're serving and what that integration of, of levels and systems could be is, is all part of this conversation. So I, I want to just commend the General Assembly for really embracing this, this agenda, this call to action. I particularly want to identify the House and Senate Education Committees as, as really taking the time and the effort and the energy to really consider the implications of this, the opportunities, and that's not new for those two, those two committees, but what perhaps is new is how this has been gathered and shaped into a comprehensive way of thinking, as opposed to little singleton pieces, or, you know, somebody's piece of pet legislation, or somebody's pet idea from the outside. What this project tries to do is to really coalesce those thoughts and those thinking, and if you've been tracking and following through the VSBA legislative newsletters, the work in the General Assembly, you will continue to see, as we talk about this document tonight, a lot of evidence of minimally conversations, but more importantly, actions that are considering to be taken or have already been taken, and that's really an important piece. So you see, again, in this five-point agenda, there is call to action, and part is a legislative call to action, and certainly you can, you can take a look at that and provide your thoughts. Another is what state policy and support looks like, and fundamentally, that refers to the Agency of Education and the State Board of Education and other policymakers. But then it comes down, and it comes home to roost with the local actions, and that's where I want to spend tonight, is focusing on each of these pieces, because that's where we've got some interest in this game. That's where we've got the opportunity to be part of making this big difference. So the first sub-bullet under local action on page three is, "School Boards and Superintendents will work together to ensure that every student has a personal learning plan focused on core academics, dispositions toward learning, and student aspirations." It's my professional assessment that we're not there yet. It's my professional assessment that this is absolutely in conversation and play with our professionals right now, and that this is not a new conversation, but it's always about the details and the technical aspects of how to get there, and it's going to require professional development and support and time for us to really achieve that. Second bullet speaks to superintendents and principals need to lead efforts within school systems to assure that learning needs of students and the professional development needs of teachers are met, and the emphasis has got to be in supporting the professional learning needs of students, uh, personal learning needs of students, rather. I, as one of the authors of this, this report, this was an important variable for me, and, and that is to really recognize the individuality of learners. I think, as Mark said earlier, if I can paraphrase Mark, that, that learning is the constant, but time could be a variable, and, and that, in that way, we're approaching learning in a more individualistic way. We're really tailoring our teaching to students' learning preferences and needs, and really knowing our learners is the best way for us to do that. The third sub-bullet is that regional soup groups should establish school calendars that provide for more continuity of learning and reflect better needs of students. Judy De Nova has provided statewide leadership, and particularly regional leadership, on this conversation, and that's going to be a second part of tonight's carousel conversation about the prospects for a different-looking calendar and what that could mean for our learners and for the achievement of our students. So that's fundamentally the first subsection. Second group is, second theme is supporting a new vision for teaching and learning, and Cindy, that's on page three. Thank you, you're there already, and I'll call the board members again. What were your takeaways on, on this one? What, what sort of called out to you, used Charlie's language, spoke to you?
I hate to monopolize, but I'll go first.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, it's important, we, we talk about the fact that students are our priority, but we have to take that type of thinking with us in every aspect of leadership and governance. So when we go into negotiations, the question we have to ask is, how does this help success of, success of the student? When we're talking about priorities at a facility, how does this help the success of the student? And just keep applying that metric over and over again to realize it's, it has to be a holistic approach. Without the buy-in of all of those groups, we're not going to get very far.
Thank you. Others?
Increased flexibility for students and staff.
What's that mean, do you think, in, through your lens?
Ability to recognize potential of students, ability to recognize potential skills of staff, greater return on investment, customized learning opportunities.
That is the future. It absolutely is. Some places it's here now, and some places it's still a future conversation. Any other takeaways?
Dynamic and responsive. To me, we're kind of stuck sometimes worrying about when to address a shortcoming, and, well, there's just no time now, we, we'll do this in the summer, and, and we have to be quick on our feet. We need to, we need to operate in a way that trends and patterns are being recognized before they go past the tipping point, so any kind of interventions that are required for a student happen while it's still relevant for them, and not after the entire class has moved on.
Perhaps the current calendar is, is one of our barriers, and that thought may certainly apply to the second piece of, of tonight's conversation. Martha?
I think expectations of teachers are evolving, and I think our classrooms aren't going to look the same, and so that says to me, we're going to have to do a lot of the education of our communities around what we're doing, why are we doing it, how, why do we think it's better for kids? Because when people see what's going to be, you know, a very different-looking classroom, we have to make sure that they understand why it looks different, and that, in fact, we're doing it because we believe it works, and hopefully we'll have ways to measure that it's working as well.
Twenty years ago, I think I confused people, some people, when I talked about it. It's really not about the teaching as much as it is about the learning. It's not about the effort and about how hard folks are working at their jobs. It's far more important about how well our students are achieving, and that we need to adapt and to be flexible around that and to, to ensure we're delivering that. Mike, please. David?
As I look through this here, read this here, new vision for teaching, it seems like a fair amount of our time is spent trying to get everybody up to a certain standard for certain criteria, whether it be reading, math, or whatever, and we're focused on making sure they do so by a certain grade. You know, they want to be in, whatever it is, fifth grade level math by sixth grade minimum, whatever, whatever the, whatever it is. And sometimes people just aren't, they don't have an interest there. So you're, you're trying to put a square peg into a round hole. So rather than emphasizing what their weakness is and working so hard to make them better at it, I'm wondering if it'd be better served if we looked at the strengths of each of these children and tried to, you know, get them engaged that way. And so maybe they can't do, you know, fifth grade math by the time they get out of ADL, but maybe they can get to a minimum level by the time they graduate from high school, in that or means it'd be a calculus graduate, you know, you know, high-level math or high-level science, whatever it is. It's, I'm wondering if we should set a minimum standard and just make sure they get there by the end of high school, and not so much focus on whether they're at sixth grade, eighth grade, or whatever, you know, the kneecap test or what tests are measured. I, and I say this point because I researched a course at IBM where, that was the whole emphasis, was learning what your team's strengths are, and, you know, building that with those people, rather than focusing on what their weakness was and trying to bring everybody up to a certain minimum of that, and I didn't know if that was ever, you know, really focused on.
Well, and I, I think that what's interesting about that comment, what strikes me is, when we've been talking at our board about our visioning project, trying to think proactively, envisioning for the future, and the model that we're really looking to use for our visioning project is one of building and emphasizing on the strengths, not addressing weaknesses and trying to, to work on those, I mean, obviously, out of the process, that, that comes out of the process, but to go into it with the concept of, let's see what's working, what are the strengths, and building on those. And the sense I get of this as well is that it has that same thought process of being proactive, looking to the future, and trying to build on the strengths. So I, I get a real positive sense from it.
The, the theory you're talking about is appreciative inquiry, and it's exactly that, it's avoiding a deficit model and really working on a strengths-based approach to, to advance, advance one's interests. Yeah, twenty years ago, a lot of schools looked like apartment buildings, and, and folks would sort of go into their apartments, shut the door, and really not relate with one another's neighbors and so forth. It's not the way today's schools are. Today's schools do, do really require, as Martha suggested, a lot of interplay between among teachers, and, and what this committee did, what this working group did as they developed this document, it sounds crazy, they spent a year, we spent a year to develop a nine-page work product, is to have combed through the last fifty years of, of really seminal documents that have really been a part of Vermont's study groups over the past half-century. And one of them, David, was Opportunity to Learn, and, and that's a, a resource I might have you look at if you're interested. It speaks to a, a different future, as Martha spoke to, and perhaps the graded system is not what the future's going to hold. Perhaps it really is going to be more about proficiency-based learning and not worrying so much about a grade-level stock and status, that, you know, children of different ages can certainly be working together as opposed to being common age groups, being forced into a, a, a single grade level. So yes, I, I wholeheartedly agree that we, we need some sort of defined foundation of what, above all else, everyone will know at least this, and then figure out what those paths look like, again, based on interests, based on, on styles, based on preferences, and based on interests. The-
Mike, can I just make a comment?
Gary, absolutely.
I'm understanding the focus is on learning, and, and we're talking about this in terms of a new vision, but it doesn't happen in a vacuum of pre-K through 12th grade, so what kind of efforts have been made or will be made to go out to the colleges and interact with them, because they're the ones who are training the future teachers? So how do they relate to this kind of, of a vision? I mean, or, obviously, if, when you have people interning with you, you can show them all this kind of stuff, but is there a good working relationship with the, the colleges? And, and again, those who are training the future teachers to, to buy into the system? I mean, is there any feel for how that would work?
You know, we've been proud of our TAP program, our Teacher Apprenticeship Program, as being one of the more progressive teacher-training institutions, if you will. It's been under the cease and issue auspices since its inception. A place called Champlain College, you've heard of Champlain College, is, we hear it works, by the way, is a, a potential new overseer of, of TAP. So it's a way in which progressive thinking is expanding into the college level in terms of, of what teacher training can look like and so forth. There is a pre-K through 12 council, a pre-K through 16 council that is very, very active and is considering those very things, that we can't just be talking about a siloed pre-K through 12 and then a siloed post-secondary institution. There really is an interface that, that's real, and, and certainly people like Maury Taylor are very interested to think about, you know, what are the missions officers are looking for, and what will my high school experience, how does that translate? How will they understand school profiles? What does that look like? So that is very, very important, that we continue those, those conversations and, and really work in sync. The last paragraph in that, Cindy, if you go to page four, is, yeah, the collective bargaining framework. The rules and the structure by which collective bargaining with, between boards and teachers happened began through legislation in 1969, and the framework really hasn't changed much, frankly, since then. The way in which things work, worked very much the way things worked, you know, thirty or forty years ago. And what this calls for is for there to be really an expansion, if you will, to the collective bargaining thoughts and processes to go beyond just the adult level, that there is a student implication inherent in what gets bargained. There is a student implication that is relevant to what gets talked about in talks with employees, and that, that we need to find a way to inject and ensure that students aren't left out of the conversation as collective bargaining does occur. So that is not an uncontroversial topic, but the committee stands by its, its suggestions. You see the legislative interest there, you see the state policy supports, down in the local actions on the bottom of page four. School boards should open discussions among board members, administrators, and teachers about what it means for the evolving role of teachers in a world-class system. They're living it, they know it, you've got a sense in it, but I think that sort of dialogue between boards and teachers would, would go a long way around that. The second bullet point is that school boards and teachers should start collective bargaining discussions with emphasis on the importance of changes in what the educational practices are. In, in many ways, the current parameters of the collective bargaining agreements can hamper educational improvement, can get in the way of progressive teachers who want to do different things differently, and we need to find some ways to really free our teachers to do what they do best, and that is to be the best professionals they can be on behalf of students. Third section is about engaging, supporting families and communities, and Cindy, that's on page five, and you're there already, you're ahead of me as always.
Trying to follow along.
You're doing fine. So again, about supporting family, engaging and supporting families and communities. What, what stood out for you in this section?
See, Mike, for me, and this applies to the last section as well, but inclusion and empowerment through inclusion, I see as sort of a modern trend coming up, and I like the way it's, it's addressed here, and also with the teachers. I think that's going to be a big element with the teachers in collective bargaining, and in our, our last principal search, for example. So I'd like to see more inclusion and empowerment through inclusion with parents and students and teachers to all come together.
To me, to me, with the part, that's very interesting, partly because it's such a, it's, it's such a goal of my own, is to really understand how we can make the two-way communication happen at levels where the student can benefit immediately. So, you know, this notion of a learning management system, we see little bits and pieces of it with Power School, but I think we can really grow and build that where it's not going to take a parent coming into a classroom, or specifically having to initiate an email conversation or a phone conversation to find out where they can help buttress a student's learning, right? We, I think we need to get to the point where it becomes almost automatic that we have an understanding between what's happening in the classroom and how I'm supposed to dovetail life at home into those lessons. It, it can't just be Friday folders anymore, it can't just be student conferences, it has to be integrated in how we think.
Thank you. Martha?
I was struck in this section by the discussion of children who live in poverty, and, you know, the, the research around what life is like for those families, and how maybe our agency of human services can help us do a better job of, of drawing those parents into what's happening with their children, and that's a challenge, but certainly all the research shows that parental engagement is so integral to students' success that, you know, I think a lot of our efforts with improving achievement for those kids have been on different methods of teaching and learning, but I think focusing on, on the parent or parents and strengthening communication could be really an important piece of moving that goal forward.
Just as a quick note on that one, our demographics are changing, and in this area generally. Vermont, first of all, defines poverty as, as students come from families whose household incomes make the children eligible for free reduced lunch. It's not always the standard across the nation, but that's Vermont, and it's, it's a reasonable standard. Using that standard, Vermont, this area is seeing about the low 20% of our children's households be in that situation, and that's just about the national average, so we are very much a reflection of the US average right now in this community, and that's, that's new sometimes for some of our, our citizens to, to appreciate and realize that. And you're absolutely right, that takes special considerations and, and special care and attention, and what does the interface look like between schools and, and social services? There's someone here, I'm sorry, yes. Martha, there you go.
Oh, no. Go, finish your thought.
No, I'm done, I'm good.
I, when we come to this part of the paper, I mean, you read it, it sounds very great, wonderful, but the reality is, we had a parent show up at a PC meeting, upset because she couldn't have access to her child's classroom whenever she wanted. So we want to engage families, encourage them to be involved with their education, but yet there's a fine line, the safety, security of the schools, we just did that policy that speaks to they have to have their prior appointments, and I just, I think there's a fine line for the schools and the teachers, keeping everybody safe, letting people feel engaged, because even if you're engaged technology-wise, I don't think you're engaged unless you're there in your child's classroom or at their assemblies. So I, I see that as a difficult process through the next few years.
Creating the balance.
Yes.
When you think about, who won tonight, Brian?
I don't want to talk about it.
If you are a board member of a K through eight school, pre-K through eight school, then the households that you're immediately connected with are about 16% of your community's households. The rest of those households don't have current school-age kids. If you're a high school board member, it's about 8%. So pre-K 12, it's about 22, 24% of our community currently have school-age kids. So it is really not just a conversation about our immediate parent base, it truly is a broader conversation about the community at large, and I think to Mark's point, it's about figuring out those ways of engagement. As you look at the action point, there's only one single action point that's a powerful one, and that is that there is responsibility that we have to get better at this, to really learn more effective ways to engage, I think was the most important word Martha spoke to earlier, really a sense of how to, not, not just, you know, give one-way communication, not just send it out, but to figure out what engagement looks like, how it feels, and for the benefit of all. This next one should field, Judy?
Before you move on, I just wanted to point out the work of our food service director, Bob Clifford, in this area. He has been a leader in the state in trying to provide free lunches to all students, and his leadership has really created some traction, I think, in the legislation. There's a bill that has some good potential, and I'm hoping, as I'm looking over at Martha, that-
Looking good at the moment.
Yeah, that we do find a way to feed all students, and I'm especially pleased with the changes that we've made in our food service program, so that we know our students are getting fresh vegetables and fruits every day. So I just wanted to point out the leadership of Bob Clifford in this area.
I'm really glad you said that, because it's so true, and it's more than just ideas he's got, it truly has been a series of actions that he has taken, and through his leadership and the leadership of the Burlington Food Service Director- And through his leadership and the leadership of the Burlington Food Service Director, they've jointly been exemplar statewide and I think have been influential to really informing the General Assembly about possibilities and what it could mean. You do have a number of children, whose, only males, are here. I just want that to sit, because it's, it's the way it is.
It's different today than it was three years ago. It's changed dramatically, and we have to be cognizant of the needs of our, the children in our communities now, the youth. The other piece I was going to comment on, Martha, was the point you made about human services working together with education. And there's been a leadership group formed with the Department of Children and Families, Education, and Human Services. And when, we had that safety dialogue night a few weeks ago, when there was a need to talk about the safety of our community, those three agencies, because of the relations that have been built through this leadership collaborative, they came together on a moment's notice to speak to the community that there's no wrong door for any of the Howard services and to provide resources to the community so that we all have a way of keeping safe. So I just wanted to point out that there are some things that are happening in this SU that are directly related to some of the things in the world-class agenda right now. They should feel good about those relationships that have been established.
I suspect this next theme of delivering using world-class technology will also resonate for board members. What, what are your takeaways from this section of the agenda? I have a love affair with that first sentence, by the way. I'm letting someone else go this time. Don't look at me.
I'll take, I'll take a run at it. I think some of this also speaks to being in a partnership with access to, I guess, the manufacturing that makes some of this available, you know, for the home use beyond the school, because I think the classrooms are, it's, the schools are at the point now, it's not just contained within the classrooms, but it actually is also contained within the homes. And I think there's a, we're seeing a dilemma in rural areas that the access of the digital age, per se. And I think there's a need for a partnership between all the schools and the communications providers, such services, devices. And I think that's where going beyond the classroom.
Thank you. Others?
The textbook model is, is one where, you know, we expected our students to walk out of the school with that in their backpack, and that's how they remained connected to the school. Now, it's not unreasonable to believe that a student is communicating with hundreds of friends, thousands of resources while they're outside of school. Shouldn't their classroom or their teacher be included in that? There's a lot of power there to extend the learning into the remainder of that awake time and learning time. So, you know, a lot of, when you see, when you see budgets get defeated because, because people are buying iPads or netbooks for classrooms, you know, is that, is that really the direction we want to go? You know, the, sometimes the enablement is simply the availability of that technology to utilize what kids are already familiar with and comfortable with. So keeping an open mind around those types of enablements is really necessary here. It's not a freebie for, for kids to play games. It's much more than that.
Here, here.
Glad another accolade is that you can't bring the student to the classroom, bring the classroom to the student.
Will say.
Because I think in the global, there's many examples where based on geographic limitations that the classroom is brought to the student rather than the student to the classroom.
I know as the President's Committee has been on two of them. You want to speak to that, Charlie? What you've seen perhaps in the deal with the use of minis throughout the building?
Well, minis throughout the building, I mean, I think that this vote yesterday was great proof that our community supports this, because our second article, two of the three pieces were iPads and iPad cards and minis for sixth grade. And I think we all held our breath, but, you know, but it passed, and it just shows that this community does have that forward thinking and supports that, and I think it's, I think it's great. And when you tour those schools, you all, you walk into every classroom, they're all using some form of technology almost all the time.
I'll share one, one quick anecdote. On a recent school tour, we asked students when we were in the computer lab how they liked using it. And the answer was, we prefer taking this laptop, sitting at a big table in the library, working together collaboratively. This notion of going to a special room during a special time to use technology is outmoded. I don't care how nice the lab is. It doesn't, it doesn't fit anymore.
I think, Charlie, the other tour we did was Summit Street, and that was an eye-opener to me. Like Andre said, you bring the, they're bringing the world to the classroom digitally. It was fascinating to me what first graders, kindergarten first graders and second graders can accomplish and what they learn just watching.
Streaming.
Virtual field trips with scientists and zoos and
Yeah.
Arctic experts and researchers.
Yeah.
Yeah, not even leaving their classroom to get there, it's amazing.
It was amazing what they picked up and learned.
So at page seven, Cindy, we've got some local actions. School boards must ensure that every school has reliable access to high-speed connectivity. I pushed a little further in committee on this, and I felt, like Andre was speaking earlier, that, yes, that's a baseline, but beyond that, to ensure equitable access to the world wide web, we've got to be sure that we've got broadband accessibility beyond school as well. That it shouldn't be that some households have it and some don't. We shouldn't have to have kids coming up to the windows on the weekends to be able to access Wi-Fi and do the work because they don't have it at home. That's unacceptable. We've got to figure out a way statewide to make it university accessible and available. Schools also have to ensure that kids have access to personal learning devices, as Charlie said, and to your credit, boards are doing just that. And I'll say just for a second, too, that with, with your support, this district took the right steps about fifteen years ago. And that was not to clumsily get into software and hardware, but to really ensure that the IT infrastructure was solidly in place. And there's a lot of effort, a lot of energy went into that. And what you've got right now is, frankly, a world-class system. You really do. It's the envy statewide of other school districts in terms of what your platform and infrastructure is. And from there, you've been able to build it. From there, you've been able to build precisely what you're actually seeing, kids having hands on now and so forth. So that investment on the front end, in my opinion, has really paid off. Superintendents and principals have to ensure that teachers have to demonstrate the skills necessary to support students in the full use of our digital learning devices. You know, those oldsters need some PD around this. We've got to be sure that we're up to speed in knowing how to use these as teaching and learning devices as we can, and that's going to require some investment on our part to ensure that all educators are up to speed on it. And I can't say enough about this next one, because you're going to be hearing more about this, so just, just know you are, and you're already talking about it. Now, as with support from the Agency of Education, we've got to make certain that boards and administrators and teachers know how to use the data that will become available to them through a longitudinal data system. We have been hungering for this for the last century, uh, last decade, last decade. Sorry. It feels like a century. And the state's been trying along the way, but we're one of the few states that just don't have a longitudinal data system. And it's for that reason that we just simply can't continue to wait. We've got to figure out a local way to make this happen, and we are. And you'll be hearing more about that and the sort of supports that we'll need from you to, to really ensure that that's in place. It is unacceptable that it takes sometimes six or eight hours to generate a single report on a very simple request because we don't have the tools, the software tools, to be able to input our data, to be able to extract it back out again, because it's essential that, again, educators and administrators and you have dashboard-ready access to the data points so we can know what's making a difference, what investments are paying off, what we need to be doing differently, what we need to be doing the same, to use Aaron's analogy, more of. What are we doing well that we need to do more, and so forth. So understand that that is a priority right now and that your education leadership team is earnest about this, and you'll be hearing a great deal more about this in the months ahead. And the last section is about providing effective leadership. Any, any big ah-hahs there?
It starts with the school boards. I think I said last, meaning that, based on my observation, a school board member is one of the weakest links in education setup. We don't necessarily have to have training, we don't have a degree, we don't have certifications. It's up to the individual. So how can we bolster that so anyone choosing to volunteer has the supports necessary to become effective quickly?
We see the action steps on page nine. Do you want to turn?
I'll just quickly point out that I, I think that our administration has done a great job of, of, you know, you read this and you think, well, we're already putting, doing a lot of this. We already have the community Wi-Fi. And so pat yourselves on the back for guiding us into those areas, because I think we're, we're on our way already in
Good point, Karen.
A lot of these changes.
Thank you. In the first bullet, local action, boards and superintendents have to work together to ensure principals have the time, support, and flexibility, the resources to enable them to fulfill their obligations as instructional leaders. And that's a lot of what CCSU does, is to try to remove unnecessary bureaucracy from the principals' laps to ensure that they've got more time and ready access to be those instructional leaders that we need them to be. Second bullet, boards and supes must identify outcomes, indicators on system performance, and will use data to inform decision-making. You've been pushing us on that, we've been pushing ourselves on that, and it's the right push. So keep it up, and it's, it's okay with us, and understand we'll be challenging each other along the way about how to identify those outcomes and indicators and what to do about those data points. Third bullet is boards in all districts and supervisor unions must work with superintendents, principals, and business managers, design and implement structural changes to allow for greater student opportunity and more nimble decision-making and attract and retain high-quality administrators. You have had success in this organization retaining administrators, and to your credit, you've had success retaining board members as well. This is the first year in a while that I can think of, there's been no board seat turnover. So we've got sixteen members from last year coming back this year, and that's a good thing. That sort of stability in leadership goes a long way and makes a lot of difference.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service indeed. Fourth is that boards and supes have to identify outcomes and indicators on system performance, and again, will use that data to inform decision-making, is consistent with the earlier thought. And the last is that boards in all districts and SUs must work with superintendents, principals, and business managers, design and implement needed structural changes to allow for a greater student opportunity, more nimble decision-making to attract and retain folks. So it is important that we figure out the structures, the systems, we minimize the barriers, and that we spend our time and energies on those things that are most important. So this was to give you some food for thought, it was to give us a chance to go over this. We've tried over some of the past board meetings to sort of get into this conversation, but events have sort of overcome the conversation, but we've initiated the conversation now. And as you watch the closure of this first half of the biennium and monte liar, and sort of track what the legislature's doing, and frankly, in my opinion, they're carrying their weight on this one, and I give them credit, I truly do. I was, I was pumped to see the governor spend the amount of time he spent in his address in January, speaking to educational issues. And to the extent that this sort of conversation helps you think about board goals, board planning, monthly agenda items, terrific, because this really is the heart of where we find ourselves now in the evolution of, of education. So I appreciate your time and conversation on this, and we said we'd double back on one element of this, and that is what might be different about the calendar? How might we make some adjustments and changes to facilitate improved student outcomes? And with that, I'm going to stop talking.
And I'm going to start. So tonight, we have for you a presentation about calendar two-point-oh. And you have seen a version of this in some of your board meetings, but this calendar's a little, slightly different. It was revised as recently as Tuesday at the regional superintendents' meeting. And we'll start by saying that the communications task team is a group of board members here tonight that have really worked on this presentation, and will be doing a follow-up activity at each local board tonight about this, which is a messaging activity. So I've asked Cindy Remy to be here because she works on that communications team, and we have a student, Maury Taylor, who's also on our communications team. And maybe the local board members who serve on the team can raise your hand so folks know who you are. Great. So calendar two-point-oh is a overview, the regional superintendents in the Champlain Valley have the responsibility each year at this time to bring forward a calendar that's adopted at this time of year by your boards. And you'll be adopting calendars tonight based on the work that they did back in December and January, February, and now you're seeing it, and your local schools have looked at the calendar for this coming school year, and you'll be viewing that tonight with adoption. This calendar is for the 2014-2015 school year. This isn't immediate, so we have some planning time to do the work on it. So Cindy wants to scroll down. We wanted to provide you some context. The world-class agenda that Mike just reviewed, this is an opportunity to let you know that that world-class agenda also came from the BSA Education Quality Framework, and you may remember that I presented that at the SU Board back in September. This is that presentation. And most specifically, you'll remember when we talked about quality education, we talked about the learning proficiencies, the learning design, and the growth indicators being in sync so that we'd have that sweet spot of where quality is, where every child's aspirations are realized. The next slide is how we've moved from, and this should be very familiar to you, from universal access to educating all students with high standards, from standardization solutions, which I think you spoke to tonight a little bit, David, to customized learning plans and processes, limited choices and options to many choices and pathways to learning, educational progress measured by seat time and credits, to progress measured by authentic learning using direct measures. And then traditional annual school calendar and schedules to instruction and learning delivered anytime, anywhere. And finally, in that quality presentation, we talked about growth indicators in the system that are based on student outcomes, and again, you'll see that required need for a data system. So the people part of the system is a feedback system that we have through our supervision and evaluation. You see that with a two-point-oh behind it, because that is in the process of revision as well. And learning systems and professional development with the new standards is also a two-point-oh. So those are two systems that are currently under development. In the structures piece, to analyze the impact of particular structures, this is where we're talking about in-school and out-of-school, traditional, non-traditional partnerships and internships, and learning time, twenty-four-seven, anytime, anywhere. We just reviewed this world-class education agenda piece, and although the calendar touches each and every one of those five, of the five-point agenda, specifically for tonight, we're going to look at the first one, which is assuring success for every student. And in that, we're talking about how do we find the time to do personalized learning plans? When and where do we find the time to create those partnerships with higher ed? Gary, you were talking about our two, our high school principal, Rob Reardon, and our CTE principal, Bob Travers, are here tonight, and they'll talk about dual enrollment opportunities as one way to start to begin those relationships, but it takes some time, but they're doing a great job reaching out now, and our students will benefit from those dual enrollment opportunities. Access to rigorous, relevant learning beyond the schoolhouse, and we've talked about that tonight. Those are all the pieces that we're talking about. Those are all the pieces that we're talking about, but we need a structure that helps make these come real and relevant. And right now, our school calendar is a barrier to doing some of this work. So, as we look at the school calendar for 2014-15, I have it somewhere in front of me to hand out. Too many papers, Cindy. Okay. And as I said, this has been revised as recently as Tuesday, so it's hot off the press. And I'll wait for it to come along around. And this proposed regional calendar, what you will see, again, for the 2014-2015 school year, has the same number of student days as our current calendar. So, there's 175 student days reflected regionally. The purpose of the 175 common days is to respect the fact that we have a technical center, technical centers throughout the state that need to have those common days so that sending schools are all in session on the same days. You'll see, this isn't dramatically different than our current calendar. The first day for students is proposed to begin on the 20th of August. Right now, that's about five days earlier than we start. So, it's, I think, there'll be concerns that you'll start to hear right away about any changes to calendar, and when you look at it, please know that we're doing this within the same resources that we currently have. So, the 20th of August would be the proposed first day, and the last day proposed is June 19th, which again, is not that different, maybe three or four days, depending on, on weather conditions of the winter, that we go typically around that same timeline. What we're introducing for consideration in this calendar is the concept of intercessions. Those are blocks of time, and right now, the possible intercession periods are what you see when you look at the black, blacked-out time. And what we're trying to do is create them in a block. So, you see a week in October, and that's the timeframe when teachers have begun those first six weeks of school and the community building and the responsive classroom, how we're going to work as a community. This is a time when they've done a lot of formative assessment work and understand the student's skills and needs. And this is a time when we could potentially think about that intercession through the lens of developing those personalized learning plans. If we don't make the time for it, we can't find, we can't have the expectation for it. And this could be a block of time where teachers can begin to look at that. But there's also other possible uses for intercessions. But you'll see that we have one whole week in November, we have two weeks, the end of December and the beginning of January. We have another two-week block at the end of February and the beginning of March, and then we have another two-week block at the end of April and the beginning of May, and they're full week blocks. And then, at the end, is another possible time from June 22nd to the 30th. If you flip your page over, this gives you an idea about, well, how can these intercessions be used? So, if we move on to the premise behind the shift, and we'll come back to that a little bit later in the presentation, the focus is on student learning and achievement. We could possibly minimize a little of that summer regression. We can maximize time within those 175 student days. The intercessions have multiple purposes for multiple stakeholders. We have data that shows in the research from other schools that use this type of schedule, uh, calendar, that there's better school climate when there's breaks within the school year. And this is also an opportunity to meet a huge unmet need right now, which is embedded professional development time. And lastly, it gives us an opportunity to respond to some of the diverse demographics that we talked about. Language-rich environments for some of our ELL students. The next slide is why Moira's here tonight, and she, and this is the first part of your calendar intercession page. She's here to speak tonight about, from a student lens, what are some of those possibilities for intercessions? Hi, Moira.
Hello.
Can you introduce yourself and what year you're in?
I'm a junior out of six high school. My name's Moira Taylor, and I'm also on the communications board. So, for this slide, this is about Students 2.0 along with the Calendar 2.0. So, for applied learning, I know the biggest question for students my age especially is, why am I learning this? Why is this important? When am I ever going to use this? So, I think with Calendar 2.0, this would leave more room for field trips, being able to visually see for a lot of students would help them with the question of, why am I learning this? Maybe mean more to them. For reteaching interventions, for those students that maybe miss a week or two due to illness, or maybe a family vacation or something, this would leave more time to be able to relearn the material. I know with the calendar we have now, it's pretty hard to catch up on that much work. Individualized enrichment choices would leave time for students to be able to express themselves, be able to experiment with new things. I know time is a limiting factor for students, especially after sports practice, a chile lesson, dinner with your family, and then your daily homework. When do you have time to be yourself, you know? So, you know, whether this be, hey, I really want to join student government, but I don't really have time to do this, having this much time would allow you to have an outlet. Collaborative opportunities with experts, I think this means a lot to me, especially for students who maybe do not see the point of school, and all they want to do is get out of high school especially. Internships for students especially might be able to give that opportunity of saying, oh, school is applicable, I need this. Outside of school, I now know what I want to do. This might help them with the future. More evenly distributed pace of education, I know especially for students in high school, there's a wide variety of learning speeds. Myself, I took two online classes. I really wanted to get rid of those extra credits. I took online computer apps and online gym. I know it's kind of silly, but I did. And I got those credits out of the way, leaving more room for my senior schedule to be able to take that extra AP Chem class, you know? So, I really wanted to get ahead for students who maybe need that extra year of review in another class, that would be, that would be, you know, having more time for them. Time for creation, reflection, involvement, this is my favorite bullet. As a high school student, you know, like I said before, you really don't have a lot of time. For me, I would love to try other things that I otherwise would not have the opportunity to do and be able to meet new adults and new students that I normally would not have the opportunity to do. Like I said, students need a lot of outlets, be able to express themselves, and try new things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Welton.
Want to talk about online phys ed real quick?
Oh, you know, it was, it was the gym class where, I mean, it wasn't so much physical activity, it was more of a health class, so I learned about dehydration, how to keep healthy, basic physical activity-type things, but...
And do you want to talk a little bit about your student government work?
I would. My freshman year, my mom pressured me to join student government, and I was like, okay, fine, I'll do it. So, I joined, and it didn't really mean much to me at the time, and then I joined Student Council, which is basically the committee that plans prom, which I thought was pretty cute at the time. And then, my sophomore year, it grew into a little more, and I was like, okay, this is pretty cool. I like it, I like having my voice be heard. And then, now my junior year, I'm the head of the Activities Committee in Student Government. I like expressing my opinion especially. A lot of, a lot more work with Student Council. And then, President Tim Rizmanoff and I of Student Government, we helped design this program called Vermont Interscholastic Council, which is a council made of all the local schools in the county. I think almost 11 of them show up, so it's pretty good for a first year. And we meet about once a month, individual committees meet about twice a month, and we discuss ways that as students, because it's a completely student-led organization, that we can improve our schools through student-led action. So, you know, having this time for me, you know, we meet in the mornings, early, early mornings, about 7:20 on Wednesdays. Hard for a high school student, but we get a lot of work done. Having more opportunity, more time, I think this would only just lead to better opportunities for other students who may not otherwise have the time to share this.
That's great. And she has been appointed to the school board's Communication Task Team, and has served all year long on that task team, and has been provided invaluable inputs. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. The intercession possibilities for teachers, we were blessed to have a teacher, board member, or a board member who's a teacher, Scott Coolidge, and on the task team, and he's going to speak to some possibilities here.
I'll, I'll go back to my seat, but just quickly, full disclosure, is this Daniel Pink?
It is.
So, I, I think I'm sitting right there. Let me just give you a taste of that day. So, that was a professional development opportunity at the beginning of the year. Daniel Pink came in, internationally recognized educational consultant. That was a professional development opportunity for us four years ago. Since that time, we haven't had, and I was there as a part of the FCSU. CCSU was gracious enough to invite us down. And since that, 2008, I've probably reflected on that moment of about 10 minutes. Because that day was scripted out, when we went back to our school and FCSU, the opportunity to collaborate around that wasn't too rich, there wasn't the, the schedule, the time schedule. So, you, you have that image of teachers in a professional development opportunity, and now I want you to think about an image of a traditional classroom. Teachers, maybe sitting where Mark is, with students around the table in a closed classroom. And my fellow teachers are at either side of me in classrooms, unable to collaborate for most of the day. We're talking at, or to, or with children, but we meet for 22 minutes during lunch. There are professional development opportunities throughout the day, throughout the year, but the schedule really isn't conducive to deep, meaningful, as Moira said, reflective opportunities to meet with people. So, when I saw this calendar, the opportunity, what struck me the most was the opportunities, not only to collaborate with other teachers, but also to collaborate with students, to collaborate with teachers. We've got Common Core coming down the line. There's going to be a whole lot of vertical collaboration that needs to, to occur there so that we are aligned throughout. Collaboration around next-gen science, there's all these opportunities, wonderful opportunities, but we need the schedule to be able to support that type of collaboration and professional development. I think it's in the Appropriations Committee right now, the flexible pathways legislation.
It's in the Senate.
It's in the Senate. So, that's an opportunity for students to have some flexibility in their schedule. Early college, early college enrollment, dual enrollment opportunities. So, there's an opportunity within this calendar to collaborate with those students, develop, help them develop plans and reflect on those plans. The personal learning plans that are coming down the line, I think that's going to be a K through 12 possible initiative. This calendar allows teachers not only to collaborate and, and work on richer, engage in richer professional development exercises, but it allows us to work, it will allow us to work with students, which is, should be the first thing. So, that, that was, I, I hope I enriched that slide a, a little bit, but that's, that was really my first walkaways, my first experience with this scheduling, and the hope for richer collaboration opportunities.
Thank you. And finally, what about families? How will this new way of looking at the school calendar provide possibilities for families? And Mark's going to speak to this slide.
So, first off, it's worth mentioning that we realize this type of scheduling will present some initial challenges when you discuss childcare. That's a given. But how do we build on that to try to really give this opportunity, a chance to help your children? So, we're trying to foster certain talents during this timeframe, whether it be music writing, sports, technical skills. A student may choose to use this time for enrichment around those concepts. Right now, we kind of embrace the notion of summer camp as a way to find little chunks of time, a week or two, to delve into something that our students might like. Perhaps the thinking could be to integrate those in these intercession time periods to actually bring that enrichment to your child and your family in a more staggered fashion. You've heard a lot said about the tutoring and remediation already that, during this timeframe, but it's important to stress, when a student is falling behind during the course of a rigorous school year, where it is assumed that you have mastery at the end of the test, and that the next material builds off that foundation, if you've got a deficiency on the foundations, you will not be able to catch up without a great deal of work. Where do you find the time? So, these sessions may be that, that breath you take where students can come in, work on that foundational material, get up to speed so when the next chapter starts, they will be ready. This notion of summer boredom, it, it may actually be more real than we, than we, than we think, but to engage a student during the year and get them interested in activities that they wish to continue during the summer will really help in keeping regression to a minimum. We're going to get students who are engaged during that long period of time, and perhaps these sessions are the time to plant the seeds that they will continue to grow in the summer. Family time, again, we have, we have issues finding opportunities within our schedules. So, whether it be science fair or other displays of learning, fine arts nights, it's a challenge to find the one day, the one time. How can we use these blocks of time to maybe include those at a time where students and family feel less pressured to attend or participate? Additionally, one problem that you see more and more is vacation times are no longer lining up with the blocks that schools offer. Families will leave during the course of the year, and students will miss time. By staggering these opportunities through the year, perhaps we can capture more student days. Chance to recharge and reflect is immense, both for students and I would add teachers as well. Somebody is running full steam ahead, perhaps they will run out of, of that enthusiasm. These breaks may offer a time to catch up. Balance is decidedly a, a hot topic amongst employers, families, students, but the reality is, we oftentimes leave little, little opportunity for that balance. This may be a time to pace the school year differently so that you aren't running for months on end waiting for that vacation. You're doing it in a more responsible way that increases the happiness of everyone involved.
Thank you, Mark. Next slide, Cindy. We're going to talk about some next steps now, and I know we're running short on time. So, the purpose of this moment, the reason why the communication team is focused on this is this is an example of what we're using in our strategic communication plan. And it's really important that we have common talking points and messages, and you may have already been contacted by people because of the newspaper article and the TV interview on the calendar, and so we wanted to ensure that you knew what the thinking was behind it, the context behind it, and the purpose of these intercessions when you're asked about it. Also, as ambassadors of communication, it's really important that we know there's multiple stakeholders involved in this, and so we have to plan several public engagement opportunities to talk... to talk about it. You haven't even had a chance as a board to talk about it yet. So later on in your individual board meetings, your communication person will run an activity on key messaging that will provide you an opportunity to ask some questions, so that we get a better idea back at the communication team level about what needs to be, how to message. Cindy's here. Oh, and I was going to also say, as those engagement opportunities are planned, we'll have to find ways to ensure that you're aware of them, so that you can participate. And we're looking at April 2014, which will be your typical time that you would take board action. Cindy's here tonight to very quickly, and I'll pass it around, speak to the key messaging piece that you'll do at your local level tonight.
So, I'm sorry, I just want to add one thing to that. I want to make sure that everyone here realizes that this is the start of the conversation.
That's right.
And how it may actually play out is yet to be determined. So, so consider this a starting point, some items to think of, and we'll grow from there.
Yes, it's really important to remember that this is a super early draft of the calendar, and it's meant, like you said, to start the conversation. And I thank you guys for having me tonight to quickly go over what your activity will look like in your local board.
Which microphone there?
Oh. So in front of you is the key messaging sheet. This is actually one of the pages in your draft strategic plan for communications that you've received in prior materials. The general foundation of this is based on some research around how people tend to receive messaging, and how it needs to be short, to the point, and the fact that people hear the first, most important thing first, then they kind of zone out in the middle, and then they tune back in at the end. So the order of how your messaging gets crafted is kind of the foundational concept behind this activity. Basically, what you do is you choose your topic. For tonight's activity, your topic will be the calendar 2.0. You select a target stakeholder group, and this is really important that it's very specific, because that will really help you clarify your key themes at the end of your activity. And for tonight, your stakeholder group will be community members, and you can use yourself as the community member and your perspectives, but just keep that kind of lens in mind as you go through your activity. Then what you do is you think of a minimum of thirty questions. You can think of more, but you cannot think of less. That's really, really important, a minimum of thirty questions that you think that particular stakeholder group may come up with. You don't need to answer them tonight, you just need to come up with the questions. What will happen is you'll start to see some themes, and they'll be apparent, because toward the end, you start to really kind of go, you may kind of repeat some questions about. You take your themes, you go through it, and you identify your top three. Then you take those top three and you prioritize them by order of importance. So your first and most important message is what you would say first. Then your least important message is what you would say second, okay? And your second most important message is what you would say last. Doesn't mean the least important, you're not going to talk about it, it's just that's the order of how your message would eventually get crafted. Tonight, you're going to stop, the activity ends once you've identified and prioritized your themes, and this handout kind of goes into what the key messaging activity is all about. But that's pretty much it. I don't know if you want to add anything to it.
Just that tonight, we won't go through all of the
Yeah.
...parts of it, but we're at least going to generate the thirty questions, the three themes, and the prioritization at your local meeting. And I just want to thank, oh.
And to build on that, the communications committee is intending to take all your responses and internalize that to be the basis of our communications of this concept with our stakeholder groups. So it has consequence, and we will give you feedback after the fact.
Yeah. It's not a meaningless activity.
Right.
You'll see there's easel paper and markers set up at each of your board meeting locations, and your communications team representative will help facilitate those discussions.
So that's, that's how you will receive your talking points, because you're going to generate the questions.
And your themes.
And the themes. So that's the purpose of the activity, and I just wanted to thank the communications team for being here tonight to explain it, to do this at their local level, and to work on something, on a structure that's over one hundred and fifty years old, that every time there's an attempt to make changes to it, we've struggled, and it's time. It's a call to action, and we need everyone's support around taking a proposal and refining it to meet the best needs of where we're headed through the education, world-class education agenda. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Judy. Before, the agenda calls out, we're going to go into recess and break up into our respective districts for follow-on meetings, but before we do that, I just want to insert two points here. One, point number one is, for those of us who live in Essex Junction and in Essex Town, yesterday was school budget vote night, and congratulations to Essex Town and Essex Junction. And similarly, last month in Westford, where the budget was passed too. When you look at the size of what the CCSU enterprise is, we're talking about a fifty-million-dollar operating budget between our districts. And it's no small effort that the school boards, our administration, our schoolhouses have gotten the trust and confidence of our communities to make, to allow us to get that funding, to make that investment in our schools. So I think we, we all can take pride in the fact that we, our school budgets were passed, were passed successfully. But on a more personal note, and I'll speak for the school boards here, I know for a fact that we couldn't have done the work to get these budgets passed without the due diligence of our supervisor union, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Grant Geisler. Grant, please step up here for a second. We, we know, we know, those of us on the districts know how many hours that we put into our individual districts to make that happen. We'll, we'll take that and multiply it by three, because Grant has to serve three masters on this, actually four, because he has to put the CCSU budget together also. So Grant basically goes like a bear. He goes into hibernation in November and comes out in the spring, because he's, we don't see him, he's got so much work to do, but it is a small token of our CCSU appreciation. We have the Dunkin' Donuts coffee, and I think if you, you will find a little surprise inside that mug, Grant, when you, when you take advantage of refilling your mug and going forward. So thank you very much. The, the second point I want to make is that this is one of the rare occasions that we're all, we're all together and we had a, that we're all together at the same time, and it's really the first time that we've been together since Dr. Michael Dewes has announced his impending retirement on the thirtieth of June coming forward here. And for those of you who are aware, I mean, Dr. Dewes has been with us many, many years, essentially, at least since, yeah, the old twentieth-century days, okay? We talk about moving to the twenty-first century education, and, and he will, he will continue to remain with us through the end of, end of June of this year. But I want, I want this board, our individual district boards and our CCSU boards to know that as part of the process of working on a superintendent vacancy, there are some very defined steps that we have to go forward and take. The CCSU board has entrusted the executive committee, who's Mark, myself, and Charlie, to come up with a superintendent selection process that we will go forward and get board's approval on. Likely that's going to happen sometime in the near future. But I want to be very clear and transparent to you, my fellow board members, to our community and our staff out here, that we're, we're being very diligent in that process, and we've put the following statement together to share with you. The CCSU executive committee would like to recognize that during leadership transition, open communication and process transparency are vital to the continued strong function of all aspects of our supervisor union. We intend to share our progress throughout this body of work. As required by law, the CCSU board has formally petitioned Vermont Secretary of Education for permission to fill the vacant superintendency. The letter was received by the secretary's office on March 29th. Pending the decision of the secretary, the CCSU executive committee is preparing a recommended transition plan to submit to the CCSU, to the full CCSU board as soon as possible for an anticipated approval no later than May 28th. In the interim, it is our desire to promote a stable and productive working environment for our administration and staff. The opportunity and method for feedback will be outlined in a future communication. We thank you for your understanding and support. And aside from this being read to the board and the public tonight, we will document this letter and send it out to all CCSU staff, teachers, administrators tomorrow, or certainly before the end of the week, tomorrow being Thursday or Friday, so everybody knows exactly how things are progressing, okay? If you have questions about this, I suggest we ask them to our individual, at our individual districts meeting, we'll have a representative there, but I wanted everyone to know how things were progressing on, on filling the superintendent vacancy, okay? So on that note, we'll go into recess, we'll, U-46 is staying right here. Prudential Committee is going to the corner, far corner over there, and Westford is
C-107.
C-107, so.
Classroom?
Yeah, it's a larger space, but it's right.
To reconvene the meeting of the U-46 board, just U-46 now at eight oh one PM, where we have, first thing, staff or visitors to be heard. We have Mr. Tom Ferris here tonight. Are you here as a visitor to be heard, or are you as a?
Agenda.
Okay, you're on, I just wanted to make sure that you weren't, I knew that was the case, but I didn't know if you're here separately. I see no other visitors to be heard, then, then we will move on. Next topic is our board reorganization. Again, before we go into this, I just want to congratulate U-46 on, on its passage of the CTE budget and its passage of the EHS budget, and that Mr. Brian Donahue was our successful writing candidate for, for us. So guys, it's, it's well done for, for all, and it, with all the other things that are happening in our supervisor union in our district right now, I can't lose sight of the fact that I was a little bit sweating bullets last night, watching the ballots get counted. It turned not to, not to be what the, what I thought. It was not the worst-case scenario, so I'm happy about that, but nevertheless, I'm always on pins and needles on election day, because I could see our scope of work changing if things didn't go according to plan, and fortunately, they did go according to plan. But nevertheless, going forward into our next, our next upcoming year, we have organization and task team assignments. What I'd like to do is I'm going to pass, pass these around. I believe we have discussed this amongst all of ourselves in earlier meetings, and I'll take a couple and pass them the other, the other way here, Mike. And this, what we'll do tonight is, there they are, Erin, is codify these in, in a public setting, so we know what the organization is and what the task team assignments are. I'd like to go ahead and, and do the, I'll take the time and read these out loud, so we've got them captured here, and then I'll ask for a motion to approve, and, and then we'll have a, a quick discussion on what's happening here. So the way the organization goes, Jack Balindor for chairman for next year, Ryan McLaren would be the vice chair, Gary Baker would be the clerk, and Al Bombardier, Brian Donahue, and Aaron Kennedy Knox will be our, will be our, our board members. The communications team for the moment would, would still remain with Aaron, Al, and Gary. The leaders at work, Al and Jack. Negotiations, Ryan and Jack. Policy, Ryan, Brian, and Gary. Serving on the CCSU board would be Brian, Jack, and Ryan. Brian holding up on the CTE board, and Aaron, the activity on the NEASK, would be our board representative. I also included here a blank line, which I anticipate will be for what U-46 will be involved with in this upcoming year for the superintendency vacancy procedure. Don't know what that's going to be yet, don't know how that's going to evolve, but I do expect that each of our districts will have some kind of representation or membership on that. I'm calling that a task team assignment, but I'm not at this point recommending anyone be assigned to it until we know what that, what that process is going to be and how it's going to be evolved.
Also coming down is we'll have some need for involvement by a number of the board members for the visioning and strategic planning.
And, and as Brian accurately points out, we will have some involvement on that as well, so, which is, which is, by the way, the reason why Brian is stepping back from being vice chairman this year. Ryan's going to use, he's taken his talents and going to South Beach, so to speak. He's going to take his talents and, and put them towards our, our visionings, our, our visioning work and doing the good work that we agreed to in, in this, in this year on where we're going to go with our, not just our, our district goals, but more of our, our school district visioning, and Brian is going to be heading that process up. So, without any further ado, do we have a, a motion to accept these task team assignments?
I had a question for you about my assignment.
Yes.
Are we going to discuss now?
We certainly can.
Okay.
Erin has, has requested some, some reassignment work, and quite frankly, I think it's an opportunity that Erin and I may be switching roles from communications to negotiations and task team, excuse me, leaders at work. The issue that I have right now, Erin, is that I would really like you to be on the negotiations team. However, we're in the throes of negotiations at the moment, and I am the, I've been elected as leader of the negotiations team. So at this point, what, what my, my vision is, is that you and I could switch roles after we get through a successful negotiations later on, whenever that's going to wrap up. But it's likely that the negotiations team will be picking up in the second part, half of next year with a new contract, pending, and this is pending the negotiations of going forward for this year, and, and we can relieve you of your responsibility on communication, because I wouldn't mind serving on that, and you could serve on. But it's premature to do that at the moment, because of where we stand with negotiations. And so I, I didn't get a chance to vet this with you first, but that's my, that's my, my suggestion.
Okay.
Okay? Are you, does that work with you? Okay. Anything else on this? So do we have a motion to accept the U-46 organization and task team assignments for, oh, oh, moved by Gary, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brian? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five, five-nil. So at, at this point, the football has been passed, okay? Gary, you are, you are our clerk right now, and if you, if, you know, I'll leave it between, Erin, if you want to continue for the night, or Gary, if you want to come sit next to Erin and see how she's doing, whatever, whatever, whatever works for you. I do expect that there'll be some turnover between the previous incumbent and the newly-appointed people to facilitate these transitions, but we will look forward to make that happen, so. We also have then our appointment of legal counsel, as, as stated in our We also have then our appointment of legal counsel, as stated in our org notes here. Our Board is represented by the firm of Wells &amp; Leopold to represent our district. We know Dennis Wells and Chris Leopold quite well, and do we have a nomination, a motion to accept them as legal counsel? Moved by Ryan?
Second.
Second by Brian? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes five-nil for the firm of Wells &amp; Leopold. Next, we have our monthly meetings. Typically, U-46 have been the third meeting of every month. We look at adjusting that accordingly based on where school vacations, holidays, other events that dictate that. We frankly, as you know, haven't been meeting on a monthly basis, but at least four to six times during the school year, we anticipate. But do we wish that we earmark the third Monday of every month as our school board meeting nights and on a schedule that's to be defined as we look at the 2013-2014 calendar?
This is sometimes a topic that has, coming with it, kind of a layout of perceived carousel meetings and that kind of stuff? Is that fair to say, Mike?
Yes, it is. There's a relationship certainly, yep.
So as we look at it, this is one of those wheels that has gone around and we find ourselves, you know, kind of putting it in motion, but during the course of it, we talk about changing it, but then it gets put in motion again and we kind of go. So I guess, you know, this is, without having the chance to do it, but I think at our board retreat, I'd really like to talk a little bit about our meetings and how they might, how they might adjust to better facilitate our visioning work and the strategic planning work coming in. So I think this is good to do right now, and I'm prepared to make the motion on this, but with just the understanding, I do want it to be a bit of a work in progress, so. So I'd make a motion that we set the third Monday at 6:30 for standing board meetings.
Motion by Brian? I'll second, I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five-zero. We also request that, you know, our superintendent accept and administer external grants and funds. This is a routine motion, but it requires the Board's approval that we allow our superintendent to go forward and do this. Is there any discussion on this? So I'll make the motion that we authorize the superintendent to accept and administer external grants and funds.
Second.
Second by Ryan? Aaron, am I going too fast for you?
Accept and administer?
External grants and funds.
Got it.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes five-zero. We also have, you know, the cash flow and business aspect of running our district allows us to save the district unnecessary expenses incurred with late payments. Do we have a motion to authorize the administration to pay our bills so that we, in advance of when we have our warrants be signed? I will make that motion to authorize to pay bills. Second by Gary? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion passes five, nothing. We also establish, by law, we have to have a newspaper of record. It has, it's a daily newspaper, and really, our only option for our newspaper of record is the Burlington Free Press. Recommend that we, I'll move that we establish the Burlington Free Press as our newspaper of record. Do we have a second? Second by Ryan? All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes five, five, nothing. We also, last year, started the School Board Association Acceptance of the VSBA Code of I have the Code of Conduct here. What, I would recommend that we route this around in case you haven't had a chance to review it. I would like each member to be here. We have one board member who's absent tonight, so we wouldn't get them to do it, but Dr. Dewise, I may want to do this in May rather than at this current time to get the chance for the Board to review the Code of Conduct and just, and sign it then, so I would prefer to table this particular thing and move it off to May, if that's okay, all right?
So go wild.
Pardon me?
I said so go wild.
Yeah, that's, only for a month, right?
It's been great for board members.
So, the last thing we have on here, and Brian had alluded to this earlier tonight about our annual planning day. We were routing a calendar, and I don't know if, is that?
I feel the same.
So we don't have a calendar? So what I'd like to do, though, is solicit inputs electronically in the next week from CCSU Board Members for your periods of availability in June, July, and August, so that we can start planning a U-46 planning session.
Is there any board member that would be uncomfortable using a Google Doc for that purpose?
No, there are a doodle. Meeting wizard, either one.
The meeting wizard often limits us to so many dates.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll use a Google Doc if no one's opposed to it. Okay, great.
So if we can run that through electronically through administration, that would be fine. Again, the only thing I would just advise the Board is that, with the events that are going on in the strategic planning, visioning process that we want to do with a changeover in leadership in our superintendentcy, potential contract negotiations, that we really sit down and carve out a whole day for ourselves for this planning process. I hope that we're sitting here on April 10th, that we can find a day sometime in June, July, or August where we can have a day to ourselves and not try and force-fit something into an afternoon session or a morning session, but, yes, sir.
I mean, even early conversations with regards to our visioning, there is going to be some substantial upfront time for the Board to get in this kind of appreciative inquiry lens and to understand it more. If we're going to be the, if we're going to be the initiators of this, we need to sort of take on that responsibility of understanding it fully, so. It may not be bad to try to look at some days and hold those days on a tentative basis in case there's more than one for planning, training, preparation purposes.
Okay. So thank you for that advice on that. I guess my advice to the Board is, as we go forward into this upcoming fiscal year, that it's going to require a time commitment on all of us on a lot of the things that we're working on, and I have trust like your communities have placed the trust in you that we'll be able to step forward and answer the bell here, but I think this is going to be a challenging year for us in terms of time commitments to do the things that we want to accomplish, so. So, again, Dr. Dewise, we'll look at, through your office, establishing a Google Docs kind of thing. Look at your calendars and see what works, and we can plan accordingly, okay? Okay, thank you. We'll move on then on our presentations, our principal reports, and actually, Rob, if you want to start, and Tom, or do we want to principal reports and then we'll do the attendance, is that? Let's do it that way, we'll do it that way.
Which would you prefer?
I would prefer that we do the principals' reports, and then we'll go forward and do the attendance briefs, so.
So based on what I submitted, I have a few updates to give, recognizing that last month ago, we had a pretty extensive data report from the high school side, but I would like to point out to the Board that last Saturday, our scholars poll team went right through all the competition and won the state championship, so they're going to be going for the Nationals very soon, and our students are very excited, as well as our advisor, Leanne Smith. In terms of an update in regards to what was provided, we did have a full faculty meeting yesterday afternoon and put forth a model for advisory, which is going to be one of the NEASC recommendations for us, and we predicted this, which is why we started a task team on this last summer, and we, after an hour-plus debate, back and forth with some suggestions and pros and cons, we agreed upon a model with all but seven voting forward to move that model forward. So the next step is to take the model as it exists, assign a teacher task team to work on the summer, and concurrently have conversations with the Union, and I'll be meeting with Joel LaGrove as early as tomorrow to make sure that the proposal meets the current wording of the contract language, so there's no possibility of grievance in violating that language. So I think we're off to a good start in regards to that piece. The last thing I'd like to highlight is our Life College Career Learning Community through Mary Beth Corelli. We've had a couple of events, and I hope we can get time for the Board to see later on in terms of looking at the business, we had business professionals come in January 21st and meet with our teachers in a business faculty-focused forum in terms of skills that they see and what they would like to see in their workers, which was extremely productive. And then February 7th, we took 42 students cross-representing all grades, all backgrounds, you name it, and we spent a whole day at St. Mike's, and Tom was with me, so he can actually chime in amongst the teachers and administrators there. It was one of the top days in my 33 years here, where students had the opportunity to give, including what an advisory should be from the student's lens, all the way up to what's working, what's not working in school, what they would like to see in terms of secondary school improvement, and it was extremely powerful. That being said, I think the Life College Career Learning Community, I think they are chomping at the bit to make a presentation to the Board, and I think you would be very pleased and also energized to hear what's going on. And Tom, I know you're not, just as an ad lib, you were there for the day, what were your reflections?
I would second that it was one of the more powerful experiences that I've had in my career in education. It was, it so validated the need for student voice, and the insight and perspective that they provided was really important. I feel a little sad because I feel it's a piece we've been missing. You know, I wish we had had more of this earlier, but that's hindsight, we move ahead. I would also say that the, having the business community in to talk with us was also a very eye-opening and important experience. I think it, again, gave us perspective that we typically lack, but is sorely missing and important as we proceed with the work that we're doing. Two amazing events.
And we have some pretty, as you saw with Myra earlier tonight, I mean, we have some pretty amazing students who can really help be leaders in this whole process, beyond the adults, certainly. Another thing I'd like to add on, and I don't know if Bob was going to talk about this or not, but Bob and I, on March 8th, we attended that morning-long gathering, I'll say, at IBM, to look at what they're seeing, as well as other industry, once again, to further illustrate specificity around math and science moving forward. I thought it was a good opportunity to get their feedback and take it back to our staff here, and to look at with the transition to Common Core from a pre-K-12 perspective, how all those transitions will occur and the supports that will be necessary as the math skills will be ramped up at earlier levels in terms of a child's experience. So I think that was, it was a good morning that we spent, and that being said, using the energy and the timing of the Common Core to get that going. The next-gen science standards, by the way, were released two o'clock yesterday afternoon, so I have no information for you yet, but our science teachers were absolutely, they couldn't wait, they're out, and there's going to be a lot of time, in particular, the June in-service days, for them to look at those standards and see what that's going to mean from a delivery of science from a K-12 perspective. So, as the visionary calendar, I think, opened the door for earlier tonight in the carousel, I mean, there's plenty for us to do. Teachers are not saying, well, jeez, I wish we had something to do for, I mean, how can we get it all done in a very serious nature, so that's nice to see something like that. That's all I have.
Good. Thanks, Rob. Any questions for Principal Reardon? Good, thank you.
Yep.
Director Travers?
Okay, feels like a while since I've sat at the table, missed the last meeting because we were out at the ASCD National Conference in Chicago, and the principal was out, or something like that. The best conference the year has to offer, and came back with a lot of ideas. My report, progress made over the past months in action plan steps, there are two progress steps I'd like to report. We had in our action plan set a goal that student council, with the guidance of teacher, advisor, and administration, would establish an action plan to host a series of healthy student initiatives. You saw in my report that we had a center-wide assembly, nearly 95% attendance by all students and programs. The presenter was Kevin Brooks, who spoke about personal decisions and, from his perspective of having at 21-years-old been in an auto accident caused by excessive speeding and drinking. It was a good day that was followed up by the student council to establish a pledge day at the center. We're also working on two other presentations for the year. One is going to be a financial literacy and personal professional development presentation for students, and the second one today, the student council viewed the video bully, and they're recommending that the center view it as an entire group, so we're making progress there, and it feels good. The other, excuse me, area was in student learning and achievement. We're undertaking a self-study of our pre-tech program in the coming weeks using a document published by, I think it's Ohio Agency of Education, evaluating the effectiveness of technical education program. The reason we're doing that is we recognize that it's our largest program, it's our feeder program, in which we have the most effect over math-science scores because we have them the longest. We may remember tried a strategy of credit recovery this past year. While we had some successes, we've come to realize that the profile of students who come to us underachieving in credits will continue to underachieve even on an online credit recovery approach. So we're going to undertake that study, and I'm hoping that using this document and an engaged group of teachers may prove effective for all of our programs going forward. Ongoing initiatives, we had Step-Up Day on April 1st. I reported that we had 470 applications at that time, actually, it turned out to be more than 480. We have accepted outright 389 students. We have on hold an additional 39 students. The hold is really about putting, giving priority to traditional-age students in some of our programs first, and then holding answers for our adults with and adults without until we process them. So, in essence, we will have a possible accept of 480 students through our Step-Up Day activities, which means we did not accept 52 students, and additional numbers would include our intro courses. We have four intro courses going forward next year, which means we have a potential of 80 more bodies, which would translate into maybe eight to 10 FTEs. So perfection there would say that perhaps we have 490 accepts. And we have under enrollment in two programs that we're following up by holding another step. Step-Up Day, contacting all of the sending schools, and we'll have a few more advertisements in print and radio and television going forward. So our goal is to be full next year, but I'm feeling very good about the numbers as they stand right now. Skills USA banquet was on April 4th. What I have for you is just a sheet of accomplishment. I'll pass that around. Our results. CTE competed in 27 different categories of the Skills USA Leadership and Skills Competition. In those 27, and there are about 60 categories that you can compete in. Of those 27 different categories, we medaled in 19 of them, which means that we had about 70% of our competitions resulted in first, second, or third. In the gold category, you see the list of the competitions, the students, and the schools from which they come. There were 10 competitions in which we received gold medal, which actually translated to 15 medals because there are some teams you see. Silver, we had eight competitions that resulted, eight silver medals in eight competitions, which resulted in 13 medals, and bronze, seven. We bronzed in seven competitions, which resulted in seven medals. 35 total medals, some students multiple medals, so 33 students in total. Eighteen, this means 18 students are eligible for the national competition in Kansas City, which will, 18, which will be by far our largest contingent to go to Kansas City in the nine years that I've been here. It means that about 22 bodies need to go to Kansas City with.
Congrats.
With.
That's great.
Yeah, so it was a good night for us, and I would recognize the team of Linda Whitaker, who's an administrative assistant, Trina Bianchi, who is the Skills USA faculty consultant, and Sarah Knight, who put together the competitions within the school and then locally, and they've done a great job. I kind of wish this would be one of the measurements of success at tax centers, but it's an important piece.
Absolutely.
Something I'd like the board to know, National Technical Honor Society was last month, and once again, I want to thank publicly Mike and Judy for attending yet again. It's always a great night. And you saw in my report, Sarah Zelli was awarded a national award by the National Center for Women in Information Technology. What that resulted in was she had five or six offers for interning because she had the opportunity to sit with leaders of national organizations in Washington. And she received a beautiful trophy, a cash award of $500, and a new laptop computer. This student, you will not be surprised, has multiple offers for colleges going forward, and she's been with us for three years. It's a great success. That's my report.
Good. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah.
Any questions for Director Travers? Good, thank you. I do have one question, coming back to EHS for Principal Reardon, and that is the status of our high school choice program and where we stand with that. I know that we were, that this board authorized, you know, up to 20 seats, I believe. Just wondering.
There were 12 applications.
Where things stood with that, so yeah, if you could brief us.
Yeah, we have 12 applications. In terms of, in terms of, let's see, current students looking to go out, I have, that would be new, I have two, one of whom had been in another district, K through eight, is here as a freshman and is missing her friends. The second is a student currently at another school who is going to move into Essex in the summer and is looking to activate school choice to remain, which makes sense because they're going to be a junior with their cohort group. So those are the two cases of students looking to go out, and we have 12 students looking to come in from Lake Region to Waukesha.
Hmm, okay.
And that's where we stand. So what I've done is I've sent, based on state statute, the letters out of acceptance prior to April 1st. They're responding to me by April 15th, and those that have already responded, they've been set up for appointments to register. Keep in mind, by state law, once a student is registered for school choice, they still have the opt-out provision of July 15th. So that's where it stands. But it's definitely more looking to come in than go out.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We have Assistant Principal Ferris here tonight to talk about our attendance task team at EHS. So, Tom, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Jeff. When I'm handing out the larger packets, it's printed from a PowerPoint that was presented from the faculty in January as a mid-year follow-up on the attendance task work. And there's a one-page, almost two-sided set of notes, really, that go with that that help explain that. But we did, we did a couple of things mid-year. One thing we decided to do was to survey faculty and get a sense of what their perceptions were about the work that we've been doing with attendance. And looking at the slides, you can see that there are six slides that show graphs of the faculty survey. The scale was five strongly agree, four agree, three equals disagree, two strongly disagree, and one equals don't know. For each of the statements, the strongly agree, agree responses substantially outnumbered the other options, with the don't know option also fairly highly represented. So we're interpreting that to mean that those people who had a, felt they had a stake in this or an interest were tending to respond favorably, but that there were a substantial number of people who, for whatever reason, just didn't feel very clear about whether the attendance procedures were having much of an impact. So we followed that up when we presented the survey results with some data. What we decided to do was to compare data from first semester, last school year, with first semester of this year. And I think we had some fairly striking results. Most dramatic change was the decrease in the number of unverified and unexcused absences and class cuts. Unverified and unexcused absences were down 28% from the previous year. We attribute a lot of that to greater accuracy. With the mechanisms that we put in place, notifying teachers and students immediately if an unverified absence is recorded, and with increased notification of families about this, we feel that the accuracy of the data we're getting about where students truly are has greatly increased. Many, many of those unverified absences in the past were simply errors occurring in the classroom, in the front office, or failure on the family's part to communicate. So there was a real improvement in terms of the communication around that. The, probably the most significant data that we got, those, the class cuts were down 42% in first semester this year compared to first semester last year. That we would attribute most likely to the fact that the number of students that we needed to track, the number of unverifieds, was also down. That what we were getting was pure information, that when a student was marked unverified, the likelihood that they had chosen to cut the class was much greater. So we were better able to follow up, and I think the word got out. Anecdotally, I know, talking to students, listening to students, I've been hearing that. They've been saying, many of them that I've heard, and I don't think it's just for my benefit, they've been saying, you know, a year ago, the feeling was you could get away with a lot more. This year, they're really on top of it. So that's gratifying. If we looked at the number of students who are listed as absent from class due to illness or other family-excused reasons, that actually increased by seven and a half and 4% respectively. But if you compare that with the number of unverifieds going down, again, I think that's a reflection of just greater accuracy and better communication on the part of families in terms of reporting that. So it appears to inflated the number of absences, but when you look at the grand total of absences from first semester last year to this year, the grand total is down.
So if somebody misses a day, is that six absences? Because this is.
It's four, yeah, four absences. Depending, well, depending, but yeah, typically it would be four absences, four class absences. These are absences per class.
Okay, that's all right. So that's what, when we looked at 15,000, we're.
Each class.
It's a little different than 15,000 days.
Right. Although it's still, the numbers are still staggering.
Yeah.
And when you get in, you know, to just, to let you know what I've had to do to get some of this data, our older data systems really just necessitate me printing out reams of paper and literally going through and counting by hand. It's a pretty daunting task because you're getting, you know, printouts that are up to 40 pages long. The numbers are staggering, just in the amount of time that's being missed for various reasons. A lot of that's unavoidable. But a big thrust of the work that we're doing is to raise consciousness around this with families. You know, obviously, if your son or daughter is sick, has the flu, they need to stay home. If you have a tragedy in your family, or, you know, some unexpected thing comes up, you can't be in school for that. There's, there are probably a lot of more borderline reasons, and we've been finding that when we have our Team for Attendance Support meetings, where we have frank discussions with families about what's been going on. It's not meant to be punitive or accusatory, but really just what is happening? What can we do? How can we support you? What could, what would you think about doing? And we hear things like, well, you know, when my son or daughter gets up in the morning and says, I don't feel too good, they look a little bit more closely, rather than just saying, okay, take the day off. It may involve thinking about, do I really want to extend that winter break, the extra three days, or should we, should we look at how we're scheduling our vacation? I think we're fairly generous in the amount of time that we allow before reaching that point where we have a meeting. Six absences per class, when there are roughly maybe 45 classes per semester, six absences is significant. So we're, it's a fair amount of time missed before we get to that point. We've made some other changes in the way that we're doing this, too. Some of this has been a learning process. When we started the year, we were sending letters when students missed three days of a class, and then following up with a letter when they'd missed six days, asking to schedule an appointment. We were generating an awful lot of paper with those three-day letters. A lot of students hit that mark. And the intent of that notification was really a courtesy, not, not some sort of warning, you know, you're in trouble, but really just to say, are you aware? Do you know that your son or daughter's missed chemistry three times? And if you have other planned absences or expecting things, you might want to plan around that. We switched to an email notification for that, which I think has been much more efficient and has been, after a little bit of tinkering with language, has been pretty well-received. And Bob was asking me earlier about that, I'm assuming that.
I received one.
Yes.
And I found it to be helpful and accommodating.
Yeah.
As a well-worried woman.
Yeah, a lot of families receive those. And it's nice, I think, differentiating the email notification, which is much less formal, with the paper notification saying, we're at a point where we really need to get together and talk. So I think that has also helped emphasize the need for holding those six-day meetings when they come up. We also now have faculty members every morning assisting in listening to the recorded attendance line. We, the question came up, Brian, you raised it in our last meeting about capacity, and that wasn't unknown at that time. What we're finding is that our capacity in terms of dealing with the six-day absences is probably not, we're not overstretched. Where we were running into a capacity issue, though, was in managing all of that communication and getting all of that information off the attendance line in the morning, and doing it in a timely enough way so that by 10:30 in the morning, we could send out the automated phone call saying, your son or daughter has missed school today. We were running into situations where we were creating false alerts inadvertently or missing things. Our error rate, just because of the amount of work involved, was unacceptable. So by bringing in a couple of faculty members to help listen to that recorded line in the morning and handle the attendance recording in the system, we've met that capacity issue. And I think a useful side benefit of that is increasing faculty awareness. So some of the reasons why students are out, the number of students are out, I think, the more that faculty have their hands in the process and understand what's going on with absence, the more nuanced their approach is to dealing with that. And that, similarly, with the Team for Attendance Support meetings, I think, has been a very useful process for a lot of people.
I'm just curious, are there potentially other features with the Power School that could start to do some self-serve on some of that? Where, you know, rather than the process of parent calling an automated line, leaving a message, someone listening to the message, getting into, you know, is there, does the software offer anything?
We are, we're hoping so. That's one of our dreams, and we're working with Vince and the folks in the tech department who have been remarkable with supporting us. It would be, we believe, it would be ideal if a parent could call in, and, you know, if your son or daughter is going to be absent due to illness, press 1, and it automatically goes into the system.
Yeah.
That, probably, we don't know, you know, the reality is something we'd have to face, but we would love to be able to try that.
Every summer, Wendy Wright, who is our student database manager, she is willing, and I send her to training, to get upgraded on what used to be sassy, and to get upgrades on Power School. So I think that is one thing that we certainly would look to, make sure she asks when she travels, I believe it's on the East Coast this year, to her training so that we can try and maximize what it is we currently have.
So that essentially is where we are to date. In terms of ongoing work, we will be administering the survey that we did mid-year with faculty, seeing where we stand at the end of the year. Hopefully, a lot of those I-don't-know responses will have shifted, and we're hoping into a positive category, but awareness of what's going on with attendance should have increased. We will also be continuing to compare data. You know, we'll have full-year data by mid-June and can start over the summer putting together a year-long comparison of where we stand with attendance. The task team that met over the summer, members of that team have continued to meet through the year and worked with me. That's been very good work. We're now talking about, again, getting some work in in the summer, trying to refine the process, address concerns, just continue to make this an ongoing piece of work. But for a first year, I think we've made a tremendous effort, and I think we have data that indicate that we're on a good track.
Thank you, Tom.
That's a quick question.
Yeah.
Maybe you said this in Audrey, but I know you said there's a need to address these I-don't knows.
Yeah.
And that they need more information, more discretion, or discussion, you're going to address that specifically, how are you going to address that? I mean, what's, what's the plan? What do you have in mind for increasing the decrease?
Well, the first part, we already have done some of that. We administered the survey before we had the faculty meeting, where we laid out some of our data and talked some more about the process. So that was kind of step one of, I mean, step one goes way back, but that was another step. So when we re-administer the survey and get a sense of where do we stand in terms of, are people still not in the know, or are people having issues, are they concerned? That would be an even more significant issue. Then we'll have to develop some ways to respond with that. We're going to need ongoing staff reminders and training with this. It's one of those things that people at the summer often come back, and there are so many of the day-to-day routine things that you need to be refreshed on. And the importance of this work and the importance of, accurately, is very, very significant. So as part of our fall-in service, we'll definitely have to assist with some reminders and discussion around this. And because the work is ongoing, we want to invite more people to be involved in this and then share the work with us.
And this is given now just specifically to the staff?
Yes.
Or teachers?
Yeah.
Because there's something in there about demonstrate responsible behavior. Have you thought about, and obviously you got your plate full here, surveying the students and how they feel about the new attendance policy? I mean, would they themselves, you think, say, yeah, you actually have more responsibility for my behavior now? Is that within the cards in the future, or is that not an issue? Or is that?
No, I think, I think that's a very good point. And I think that's something that would probably be worth doing before the end of this year. As we look toward next year, and we have the advisory program in place, that positions us very well to have a better way to drill down and, and discuss that, which would probably be even more significant.
And give more ownership themselves, I think.
But we clearly could have a Survey Monkey tool go out with specific questions and get data.
I know you can get surveyed to death, I mean, because I know they have tests and surveys, but I just, so I was just kind of curious.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. You know, and following up especially on the day that we had in February at St. Mike's.
Mm-hmm.
You know, underscoring the power and the need for student voice, I think that's, that's a very good point.
One thing I just would like to remind the board about is if you harken back to our climate survey, the issue of attendance at EHS really manifested itself clearly in our climate survey results. And Principal Reardon and Mr. Ferris, thank you for taking this initiative to start pulling this together, because I think this is an important topic in many different ways. And I appreciate you taking the time and pulling this data together for us and sharing it with the board, because it is a topic of interest to us.
I guess while we're on the subject, I would ask for the, for the June meeting, would you like kind of a summary of the first year, round up on attendance?
Absolutely.
But, you know, that's something that we could do. I mean, not necessarily maybe have all the data then, maybe August, but the point is to wrap this up as a year one, I think.
Sure.
That would be something we'd want to do.
Just for clarification, is this CTE and EHS?
No.
Or is this EHS only?
EHS.
Okay, thank you. Next up, our task team reports. I'd like to just, I'll go through this real quick with, with what's happening, because there's a lot of things that have been happening, and we could spend a lot of time doing this, but I'll do the Quick Readers Digest version, at least with leaders at work and with negotiations. I'll start leaders at work first. We are on an initiative at the moment to really look at board member training and what it means. You've heard this earlier tonight when we looked at the topic of the world-class educational agenda, is what it means to be a board member. And, and not just, it morphed into something more than just new board member orientation, but, but kind of levels of competency that board members should, should be expected to attain as you progress through a board membership career. It's, it's interesting that, I think Mark said it clearly earlier this evening, that of, it's perceived that, that in our entire educational system, you have to have credentials to be a superintendent, or a teacher, or a principal, and you have certain requirements that you have to, have to have to be inside the school walls. But you don't have to have any credentials to, other than get thirty names on a petition and get your name on the ballot to be elected to the school board. And so we, each of us come with varying backgrounds and varying interests in public education here. And so what we're looking at from a leaders-at-work perspective are, what are, what are those standards by which board members should be expected to have knowledge of in terms of finance, in terms of organization, in terms of curriculum instruction and assessment, in terms of human resources, in terms of working with task teams? There's a myriad of different aspects that, that we, at least leaders at work, feel the, a board member, not be necessarily well-versed in, but at least aware of, of what a board member's responsibilities are in these areas. So we're working on this right now. Actually, the, the plan, we don't quite know where we're going, where we're going to go with our plan. Tonight would have been, we typically meet the second Wednesday of every month, which would have been tonight for our leaders at work, but we had this little thing called Carousel that got in our way. So I would expect to have more information coming out of that at our next board meeting, okay? Negotiations, we had our first negotiation, face-to-face meeting with the association. Brian, when was it? A week ago Wednesday, approximately in that timeframe?
Yeah.
That, I want to say it was the twenty-seventh of March. We have two meetings scheduled in the next, coming up next week. We've had an initial exchange of proposals with the association. The way the process works is, is that the next round of proposals will be, will be the final exchange of proposals. No changes from either the negotiations team or the association's team will be permitted to be discussed after, after that exchange of final proposals. And we've got a roadmap laid out for, for various meeting dates throughout April and May. I would say that we're off to a, a good start on our negotiations. We can reference our master agreement on, online as to what the, the topics of interest are. And we just, we look forward to engaging and having a successful negotiations. I want to say that both the association and the negotiations team of, from the school board, both, it got off to a real good collaborative start. The tone and timber is not antagonistic, it's very upright. And I think both parties are interested in coming up in an agreement that's mutually beneficial to everyone, so. Any questions on either leaders at work or, or negotiations? Communications, I, one thing I just, and I'll hold off on communications because it kind of touches on a follow-on topic about the annual meeting vote review, but any news, Aaron or Gary, on communications that you would like to share? Because we do have the key messaging and, uh, topic that was introduced to us earlier this evening. Do we want to do this now, or do we want to hold off on our agenda? We have it as a separate bullet item, that's what I'm asking. So we can do it now, or do it, do it later?
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
Do it, I'll just do it later.
Okay, that's fine, do it later. So, so any other new news coming out of negotiations, out of communications? Okay.
That's what we've been working on.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That, and just the weekly forum, the, about the vote upcoming, which obviously is over now, so nothing, yeah.
Yeah, the messaging for the annual meeting and the votes.
Okay. Policy, Ryan, Brian, any comments you would like to say what's going on with, with our task team, our policy task teams?
Uh, policy B twenty, we're revisiting.
The policy that never stops being revisited.
Yeah.
B twenty.
So maybe, I don't know, we'll see what happens there. And then the only other big one is the wellness policy, which was a big deal when it was first implemented, and will be a long project, I think, for the policy committee to do, with it, a whole revamp of it. Or at least, I mean, we're starting that process. So there'll be a lot of stakeholders involved, I imagine. And that will span a fairly lengthy time, time span in terms of our meetings. So those are the two big ones, I think. And the rest is just our, we're trying to keep up with our routine maintenance. I think we've fallen behind a little bit, so, yeah.
Okay. Uh, news from the CCSU board? Brian, maybe you can chime in there, and I'll, I'll certainly amend anything you may want to say about CCSU board.
Um, well, at our last meeting, we continued the conversation about one fifty-three.
Yes.
Which is the legislation of consolidation of services into the ESU. We enjoy much of that already. But the final piece is on special educators. And so the administration sort of briefed us on different options, and we provided some direction with regards to that, and be a topic that we'll continue to update on. I think the deadline would be for, that in statute, it's required by, not next year, but the year after that.
Right.
But again, there's lots under consideration, even by the legislators, legislation right now. And Mike provided information with regards to his pending retirement.
Yeah.
Is there other parts that we did?
No, those were certainly the two, the two major themes there. The, the Act one, one fifty-three, uh, work that's, that's going, are going on, our CCSU board is taking a rather unique approach in the state on how we're choosing to handle that. A, a, a strict interpretation of what that act says would say that special educators would be pulled out of the individual districts and assigned to the supervisory union to provide services across supervisory unions. Our, our supervisory union, as Brian alluded to, is much more collaborative than other supervisory unions throughout the state. We're taking a more liberal interpretation of the, of what that act is. And our, our approach, and we're working on it, but our, our approach will be, we will inform the Secretary of Education that we will meet the tenants of the Act one fifty-three in providing, in satisfying special education needs of our students through our current structure of our educators assigned to each of the districts. So this, this avoids a lot of administrivia of personnel transfers and new bargaining units, and, and allows more collaborative shared services between Prudential Committee, Westford, and, and U forty-six. So, so we think we've got a, a good solution that works for us. And frankly, maybe one way of looking at it is, is we're going to push back a little bit on the, on the act that's being fed to us and offer an alternative for how we're going to implement those changes. So really enough said on that. With regards to the superintendent's vacancy, I shared earlier this evening a letter that the Executive Committee of the CCSU Board is going to send out tomorrow. We are, we are in the processes of trying to, trying to define what a superintendent search policy or procedure is going to be. Frankly, on, on our, on our collective boards, the sixteen members here, I mean, we are not in a, we are not in a supervisory union where we have a lot of turnover amongst our superintendents, right? And, uh, you know, Dr. Deweze has been with us sixteen years, I believe, as-
Nineteen ninety-two.
Well, ninety-two is when he came into the district, but as superintendent, I want to say since ninety-seven.
Yeah, that's about right.
So, so fifteen, sixteen years that he's been our superintendent. So frankly, we don't have a lot of experience in a superintendent search procedure, and we're, we're trying to learn our way through that. And in the meantime, we want to maintain the good work that's going on in every one of our schoolhouses. You know, for us here at Essex Educational Center of CTE and EHS, and be very deliberate in our superintendent search and not, really what we're, what, what our approach is, is not doing something fast, but doing something right. And that's, that's where, where we, as an executive committee, are going to come back to the CCSU board with, with that kind of mantra of where we want to go with this, so.
Jack, uh-
Yes, sir. TAP. TAP is, I will, do you want to fill the, tell us about the, the TAP status?
Yeah, so at the meeting, we had Scott Mosher and Amy Cole update us with regards to the transfer of TAP to potentially another organization. And so Champlain College is the primary prospect for that transfer. And, but there's still a number of details that need to be worked out, but it could, that transfer could happen as soon as the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen school year.
Yeah, effective like the first of July-
Yeah.
Of, of this, of this year, so.
So the, the board, the CCSU board authorized the executive, the, the chair of the ESU to enter into an agreement as details are finalized, to make that transfer occur by June thirtieth, twenty thirteen.
Champlain College, who's, who's the likely recipient of the TAP program, is motivated to, to move on this quickly, and has indicated that it's a program of interest to them. It matches well with their endeavors on what they're trying to do to broaden their educational experience offered at Champlain College. It's a nice fit for them that they don't have a competing, say, uh, elementary or secondary school teacher program there right now. And they're looking for outreach beyond traditional students, which is where TAP is right now, too. So it works on a lot of different levels for having this program transfer over. For, for our, our employees in TAP, Scott Mosher and Ellen Emery, it offers a, a stability for them. They would be, uh, a transfer, be part of that transfer. They would come over to, uh, to the, under new management moniker of, of the TAP program. And everything seems to be moving quickly, and, and the details are being fleshed out, but so far, so good.
That's good news, I'm just commenting on that, that's good news.
Uh, we thought this, this might be a much more painful process, and it's going swimmingly well. Knock on wood, so.
Yep, that's great. Who, who's the management of it now?
Scott Mosher is the director of the TAP program.
Under CCSU.
Under CCSU, yeah, this is a, this is a CCSU topic, you know.
Scott was a teacher in the high school and moved into that role.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And then why the, the need for change, I mean?
The, the TAP program itself has, 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 uh, the origin, the original genesis of the TAP program, which was ten, twelve years ago-
Twelve years ago.
Twelve years ago?
Yeah.
Was, was an alternative way for, say, adults with a, a baccalaureate degree to get their teaching credentials to become teachers without going through a, a traditional college, you know, education, into school of education degree. And specifically, it was set up within CCSU to get STEM-like teachers, science, technology, you know, science, engineering, technology, math majors into, where we had teacher shortages. Those teacher shortages don't exist within CCSU, to the, at least to the extent that they did ten years ago. Further, the recruiting of that, of those students, this has become a, not just statewide, but region-wide type of program. We are, they are attracting students from the southern part of the state, from New Hampshire, from northeast New York, to come in and, and, and work through the TAP program to get their teaching credential. To that extent, it's become something much broader than what CCSU envisioned for, for a sole source, an additional supply of, of teachers. And, and so the program, it's probably a better match for a, a, a school such as Champlain College, which is looking to broaden its, uh, opportunities to its students on a, on a more regional, rather than a local, local basis. So that's how things are moving along. Okay? Okay, I, I think, I think that's all that we'll talk about for, for task teams for, for tonight. Next up is our annual meeting and vote review. To that extent, I shared with the board members in an email last night, as I was sitting over at Park Street School, watching the ballots get counted, what the results were on our, on our four different articles that were on the ballot. The results were, were printed in, in Free Press today, too. So again, no, our, our results were outstanding. I was frankly surprised at the percentage of the yes vote compared to percentage of no votes. So I was pleasantly surprised at that. I will say, when you look at, at the number of, of votes that were cast in both Essex Town and Essex Junction, and the way that it works for U forty-six is that, and for those of us who voted yesterday, you'll note that both, and being, I don't, I'm pretty sure it's the same in Essex Town, but in Essex Junction, for the PC ballots, you had a ballot that could be- had a ballot that could be fed into the, into the automatic reader, so the vote tallies happen much quicker, okay? For U forty-six, the way it has to work with the paper ballots is, is that the Essex, uh, Essex Junction and the Essex Town ballots have to be co-mingled together. And so you can't discriminate which district is, is voting which way. So it, what, it, it's a very laborious process where the, the two districts come together and literally the ballot boxes are dumped on a table and they're hand-sorted by citizens. And they're counted up one at a time, uh, by a, 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 a small cadre of, of those people who worked at the, at, all day at the polls, you know? So my hat's off to them, that's, it's a long day and it's tedious work and it just brought back visions of hanging chads and everything else that were going on there because that's, that's the kind of, that's exactly the kind of thing that was going on. But, uh, um, my, my endpoint, and then I'll open it up the floor for any further discussion on this, was that, I don't know, I would say we had maybe less than twenty citizens at our annual meeting Monday night-
Mm-hmm.
-for U forty-six.
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yes.
And, and so if we had seventeen citizens there for our annual meeting, we had approximately twelve hundred votes come in. So, you know, less than, most people are getting information about how they're going to vote outside of the annual meeting, right? And it does cause me to think, the amount of work that we put into that, and to get ready for that annual meeting versus the, the, the public benefit of it is, is, is something I think we really do need to take a look at. We have a statutory requirement to have an annual meeting, uh, but I am not convinced it's a good way, it's a good use of resources to do it the way that we're doing. It's something we can talk about more in our, in our planning days or, or going forward here. I have, and Aaron, I'm gonna turn these over to you because, uh, I collected these after the, these, these were the, the post, uh, annual meeting survey notes and I, I gave them last, oh, I'm sorry, Aaron. I gave them to administration last night and what you see is there is, is a cover sheet that tallies what the comments and results were, but you also have all the raw data of, of information of people that submitted, submitted comments back on the survey.
As a percentage of the people that went to the meeting, we had a high percentage of survey respondents.
Yes, we did, yes, we did.
I think we got fourteen. But it's actually, I, I haven't digested the entire, but what I looked at, it was, I thought some valuable-
Absolutely.
A small percentage, but-
Do you know what percentage that twelve hundred is of registered voters?
I, I do not know.
It's like, it's fifteen thousand citizens, probably- Probably sixty percent of those are eligible and then probably ten percent of that's registered. Just as it's, when you, when you think of all those people in CCSU that cast ballots for a total of around fifty million dollars worth of expenditures, fifty-one, it's probably around fifty-three million, it's just, it's, it is a, um, it is a common commentary of our systems, of how few, few people participate, regardless of the consequence.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, just four, ten thousand registered voters. It's a surprisingly large percentage, 'cause they don't, it's a long and complicated story, but roles don't get cleared very frequently.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So people linger.
I do know.
There's names and names and, but that's a whole different.
No, so. Any, any, any other quick comments about the annual meeting? Were, were we happy with the jazz band, were we happy with the room layout, uh, uh, the artwork, the, uh, refreshments in the back? I mean, you know, maybe that's the kinda stuff we'll digest as we look at the, the survey results, but, uh-
I think we're doing an exceptionally good job, but I think we have to look at the efficacy of it.
Yes.
I think we're doing the best we can with something that might be rather-
Archaic.
Motive.
But I, I love the punctuation of putting us in the mindset of having students perform, student artwork there, so lest we don't forget, you know, kind of thing.
Right.
I think it's, and it's incredible, you know, the number of those kids are, are, um, you know, we're, we're fortunate to have had a chance to hear them. I mean, those are truly talented young people-
Absolutely.
-that make a difference, so. But it, it is a, it's a lot of work, um, I'm, in my twelve years of either as an administrator or as a citizen or as a board member, it's the same people. Um, and I'm not sure if people wait until the night before Australia, Australian balloting to decide whether they're gonna support a budget or not. You know, it's, I just don't, I don't think that's the methodology that people are sort of like, well, I'll wait to see what they have to say. I don't think it's hanging on that. Though you do a great job, Jack. You do, you do put us on the edge of our seats, but it's, uh, I think people are coming in already predisposed of their opinion.
Um, I also, my comment, as I was watching the, the ballots getting counted, if you remember what our four articles were, we, this year, we had, uh, we had to do a Part A and Part B of the, of the, the budget because we, we crossed the two-vote threshold this year. Uh, interesting that, uh, at the, at the ballot counting, for me anyway, you had, you had the, the, a, a group of people that voted yes on everything, you had a group of votes that voted no on everything, and then you had a group of ballots that were kind of mixed, some were yes and some were no, right? And the ones that really caught my particular attention this year were the peop- the people who said no on Article Three, Part A, which was our EHS budget, no on Part Two, Article Three B, which was the, which was triggered by the two-vote threshold, but said yes to Article Four, which was if Article Three, if Article Three B passes, which you said no to, do you wanna use it for the capital plan? And I'm, well, you just voted no, so why are you saying yes to using it as a capital? And then turning around on Article Five, which was our CTE budget, saying no. So you, you, there were, there were votes there with, that went no, no, yes, no, and I, I don't see, I don't see the logic, how anyone could have connected the dots on making that happen. But that's just me and there, there, if, if anyone out there in R E T land who, who may be listening to this can just explain the logic to me on why someone might be doing that, I would love to hear it because I, 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 I can't grasp the logic behind voting something like that. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I just don't understand the thought process and how something like that ha- occurred. Um, nevertheless, we, we got, we got a good, solid budget and, and I'm, I'm very happy to make that happen and, uh, I, I think Aaron's got the feedback and will give a chance to digest it more and maybe have, uh, additional discussions as this year goes for planning for next year's annual meeting, lessons learned, right? Okay. Uh, board visioning, Brian, maybe-
Yeah.
You can lead us through, through this.
Yeah, I think I can, I can help with some of our, um, some of our timing, um, because I, I don't think I have, depending upon the questions of the board, I don't think I have the, the whole agenda time needed. Um, I sat down with Mary Jane, uh, last week for about three hours, um, we got together to talk about the process and really try to drive home what is going to be ultimately the proposal that she'll give us for her total services. And I, I asked her to try to be comprehensive in that, um, design a plan that she felt was going to be, if executed, was gonna really deliver the end results of what we wanted, um, which is a, a visioning process and strategic planning process through an appreciative inquiry lens, but also to seat and seed our organization as a whole, our board, additional staff, our community, our other stakeholders, with an appreciation or, or with a better context and, and maybe even a development of tools in this AI lens, you know? So it is about an end and about a means. So she's working on that, she'll have an initial kinda pass to see if it reflects our conversation. It will then come to the board with her presenting it so that we can really understand what we're in for, um, because I think it's, you know, just as we, as, as we've laid out for a while, this is gonna be a journey a bit. This isn't sort of like a one-and-done where, you know, what do we do in July when this is finished kind of thing. Um, this is really trying to change a bit of how we do things, the way we do them as, um, as a governance unit, but also as an institution, um, and, and perhaps as a community. So, um, definitely I see along the way is that we'll have the proposal, have a presentation from her, understand it, have the board take some action, and then it will probably start with the board, but then quickly start to go out to be a group of people that will be this kinda sort of core, and this core will start to bring in faculty, staff, um, mostly an internal core to really get trained on the appreciative inquiry process. And then we'll start going out and, um, and working on the interviews, and then that comes back into a culmination event. But as we talked, as the board gets its IA kind of legs underneath it, we'll be able to go out and through appreciative inquiry, be able to look at things like perhaps School Calendar two point O, using appreciative inquiry, using appreciative inquiry to look at our budget development process, um, and other things and where we can have engagement opportunities that I think we really, um, thirst after, you know, to, to actually have an engagement, you know? Even the annual meeting is very much of a, of a to process, and I think we're looking for a from process. And so that's, that's the, that's where we're going with this visioning. So more to come in the next meeting, probably in the org notes, we'll see the proposal and then some presentation, and then we'll try to kick it off probably with a, you know, it would be, in my, in my calculations, it would be nice to get a June planning meeting and do some work with Mary Jane in June because it works in this year's budget, and then we have next year's budget going out, and by June, we'd be able to see a little bit of where things are gonna be for fund balance already, so. Any questions about, or concerns? I know, I mean, Center for Technology is right now sort of, um, a little bit of a poster child of-
Kind of piloting it.
Yeah.
Uh, in two areas it's come up. Uh, we, for one of our professional development strands, had about fifteen teachers take the appreciative inquiry for teachers-
Mm-hmm.
-um, strand that was co-facilitated by Mary Jane and, and Carolyn Dickinson. Um, and then, uh, through, through our staff meetings, we've been using Mary Jane and Carrie to do AI light or small AI-
Yep.
-the principles of AI in forming advisory committees.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, it, it's a journey.
Yeah.
I think it's a, I think it's a good one. I think, um, one thing that I thought of is, is you said, as you go back out and try to do those interviews or draw people in to tune them up to the, to the process and the thinking, you, you've got twenty-five staff members at CTE or, who are comfortable with-
Yeah.
-the whole process, who you may wanna tap into.
Absolutely. Well, and I think if we can make that at some point, you know, fifty to seventy-five across the Ed Center, um, you know, it just, I, I'm, more and more, as I read it, I'm convinced of two premises that I think are core to this is, one is that through an appreciative inquiry basis, we're looking at, um, we're, we're looking at situation or at a process that potentially can, can be less defensive creating, you know, you're not going in, it's not this deficit basis-
Mm-hmm.
-so that you can engage people. Um, and the second premise is, we have so much good happening-
Mm-hmm.
-and public education has so much good happening, but there's such a gravitational force to the places that, um, we know we need to work on, but, but appreciative inquiry really tells us that it is a, it is, you know, there's a certain amount that can be filling in a, in a vacuum, and if you fill it with positive and strength, then you'll have accomplished the outcome, rather than trying to focus on eliminating negatives if you expand your positives. Um, so I, I'm excited about it and I think we're seeing some early work and adoption of it.
Yeah, it's interesting, sitting with a teacher today about supervision evaluation and setting goals. Without bringing it up, I could hear that teacher using the language-
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and the methodology, and it just reminded me that it's nice to have a common vernacular.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Well, I, and I think it goes into this whole two-point-O. I mean, when we start talking about personal learning paths and finding kids' strengths and looking at their opportunities, I mean, it, this is what it's about, you know, really trying to maximize that and bringing it into our vocabulary or thinking all the time, so.
On an, on an individual level, you can really see people who embrace the concept, internalize it and talk about what, what do they wanna grow about their professional development, what do they want to achieve?
Right. So more to come.
Good, good, thanks, Brian. Next, we have our, our key messaging and Gary, you're, Aaron, I'm looking at you to help facilitate this discussion then, okay?
All right, as Cindy mentioned earlier, um, and this was something that we actually did at our last communication meeting, which was, Jack was actually there as well.
I, I did happen to come to that meeting that night.
And it was basically as, as the layout of the plan is we are to come up with twenty questions. Again, these are not necessary to be debated or solved in any stretch of imagination tonight. It's just, uh, you are to wear the, the cap of a community member and, uh, what do you think about, uh, the proposed, uh, calendar? As was stated earlier, this is just in the conceptual phase, so, um, what I will do is I'll grab a pen and go on the other side, and Aaron can have this one, and you just kinda come with questions. So as a parent, uh, and if you're not a parent, imagine yourself as one, or even if you're thinking as a community member that does not have kids, you know, Mike talked about how few there actually are, um, but what are some of the questions you have or concerns about the proposed, um, two-point-O calendar? And then from that, we will list our thirty questions, if there's more, we'll, we'll certainly add more, but, uh, it's been mandated, you come up with at least thirty questions, uh, then we'll, you'll find a common theme or common factor, okay? Maybe seven or eight of them are linked to one factor or themes, they called it, and then from that point on, we will, as Cindy said, prioritize, and what's the most important as far as how we get the message out, uh, to the people, and might also help us respond to people in the community when they ask us questions, uh, likely to hear some of the questions that we'll come up with. So, um, do you wanna add to that, or is there any?
No, I mean, the only thing I was gonna say is, did anyone here go to any of the, um, Heart and Soul events? This is similar to what I went, one of the Heart and Soul community meetings that I went to, this was the process that they used as well. So talking about coming up with kind of a large number of topics, or in this case, we're kind of looking for, I guess, in a message or question format and then grouping them, so we're trying to come up with three kind of core groups, I guess that's what they'd like us to-
Yeah, I guess to follow up on that, the whole thing, and we've been working on this all year, was to come up with a decision framework, so it's not just for the calendar, you know, the purpose is anytime we have something to come up with, whether it's a, a hire for a webmaster, or, uh, what do the people think about changing in terms of the food services that are offered here, you know, this is a process that is recommended we go through, this is the framework that we in Communications have been working with to, to kind of address these issues in a very systematic kinda way.
So looking at the calendar that was presented to us tonight-
So, so this one, right, our calendar two-point-O.
If you were someone in the community, you know, what, what would be something that you would ask about this particular calendar?
How much is it going to cost? Okay?
How will the decision be made?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I wanted to open the aperture, Bob and Rob, for you guys to participate in this as well.
Oh, yes, please.
Not, this isn't, yeah.
You're community members.
No, no, I think that's, I think it's great. No, no, I think that's, I think it's great.
I, I had a question.
Yeah.
What exactly is an intercession? I, I don't know what it is.
What, what is an interception, intercession, right?
What do they say, you know, what, what are they saying when they, what is their definition of intercession for this model?
Okay.
It's like a week term for vacation.
Is this the first step to year-round schooling?
That was my question the other night.
Is this the first step to year-round school?
Correct. Schooling, yes.
Sorry, my writing is very messy.
Mine's a lot worse than that, so.
Okay.
Is this a statewide initiative?
I think this is the superintendent, the, the.
I think it's just Champaign.
Champaign Valley, I was gonna say our north.
But I think the last question is wonderful.
Oh, it's a bad, yeah, yeah. Right, again, we're, we're thinking of what will community members answer.
Right, right.
So is this statewide?
What's wrong with the old calendar? The current calendar.
You know, and then just to piggyback off what Ryan just said, you don't have to write anything. I can really remember the first year clearly that we started school before the fair was done. And, you know, you would've thought that the, the sky was crumbling.
I'll pick up.
Because it was a change. It was a big change for this community, so.
Starting before Labor Day is still a big change for a lot of people.
So, I mean.
A derivative of question two is who will make the decision?
I had a question on, uh, will there still be quarters and semesters? That's a good question.
Is this also the CTE schedule slash how does that work with some districts?
There's a what? I'm sorry, but is it basically when I'm.
Yeah, yeah, is it, uh, is this the, would this be the schedule for CTE?
Okay.
And how does that coordinate with other, that's more of a board member hat question, I think, but.
How's this work with, um, sports?
Yeah, it.
Now, as a community, I could see a community member asking, I guess, I'm kind of asking it myself, but why a hundred and seventy-five days? Now, I, I know why, but I think a lot of people would ask.
That relates to question one.
How do you coordinate the staff-student time? Like if I'm, I wanna go and see Charlie Burnett during my intercession and work with him, that's like a, you gotta, if it's two schedules, you have to coordinate. You know what I mean? To get that.
There's a teacher-focused question. Where do, where do teacher vacations fall?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
How does this affect the college admissions process?
And I, I was thinking, you know, how do you, how do you ch- cover this with childcare?
Use my lifetime on this page. Fifteen hours childcare.
It's already tough enough.
Yeah.
Two of my vacations are long. Two week vacations are long.
Oh, they're intercessions, especially with your family. With your family, intercessions are work.
Two week breaks, two week intercessions. I mean, an intervention.
It's fifteen, you know, I'll pick up on it.
Others?
If I hadn't seen that.
So we're halfway there. We're halfway there.
Halfway there.
It doesn't have to be yet.
If I hadn't seen the presentation, I think my first question would be, how does this improve learning quality of education?
See, I, my thought process had been that it was going to be more almost like, like more like three semesters, like with the breaks more consolidated and larger breaks. But I'm seeing like a week in October, a week in November, and two weeks in December. So like the continuity of the education block, I, I'm not seeing that there. Like I was thinking of more like a kind of a September, October, then you'd kinda have this big Christmas break. Maybe almost more what like private schools do, maybe like larger teaching chunks with less breaks. But then, once I think maybe I understand more of what the intercession is, then maybe that would, that wasn't really a question, I guess that was.
But I, I would.
But I don't wanna lose.
Right, right.
Let's, Ryan's question.
Yeah.
Which was, how does this improve educational quality?
Yeah.
And to Aaron's point too, this was a Plan A. Yeah, there was Plan B and Plan C that they have.
Place to start.
Which I think just the fact that we're changing the schedules enough to get people to notice. Um, so any questions, if you'll link to any of that, it would be good.
I think to build off the bigger question that we've kinda talked about, the twenty-twenty aspect, um, I can just tell you, any classroom in August, September, and May and June upstairs or in the interior, what infrastructure changes will we need to make the learning environment suitable for learning? When you have a degree, ninety-five degree day with high humidity, so.
What, what physical changes?
What, what facility improvements may be necessary? How's, how's that?
Build some outdoor classrooms.
I'm gonna call that up too.
How, how will?
What's the cost of session?
Right.
So this is where we'll start grouping them.
Yes, yeah.
How will the required school activities like, um, mandatory testing be affected by this shift in, because I don't, for me, I wanna lay over all of the events that happen at CTE that are part of our operating plan and see what happens with these intercessions.
So how will mandatory testing?
That's one, yeah, because I, I manage nine sending high schools kneecap scheduling.
Yeah.
Like to say only nine?
Well, no, any given year, it could be eleven or twelve.
But isn't kneecap going away in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen?
They'll just call it a different thing.
Well, no, but on a serious note, it'll, it'll be S back.
Yeah.
And that is gonna be the spring of twenty fifteen, so everything's gonna be done in the spring, not fall and spring.
Right.
That doesn't mean it's gonna be easy.
Um.
Certainly not from the student perspective.
How does this affect student employment slash internships? Have, we talked to employers about this, you know, is that a stakeholder group that's?
How does this impact student employment?
Student employment.
It'd certainly impact Parks and Rec. Yep. Well, that's, that's a question. How does Parks and Rec interface with this?
Yeah.
Schedule, both the town and the village, among others, obviously.
Is that because of who they employ?
So, um, how does this affect?
Yes, lifeguards.
And then the next question was.
Lifeguards.
Uh, impact to Parks and Recreation. How does this impact Parks and Recreation? Both, both, uh, in EJ and ET.
And I, I looked at it and I, my curio, I was curious, it says proposed regional calendar. So I was wondering, what is the region? Cause I'm thinking, you know, if you have, you know, families of people that work, um, because that, so what is the proposed region? Okay, we're at twenty-one.
Want me to start?
Sure. I mean, we don't, you know, if you feel like we've kinda hit them all, it's not like we have to stretch.
Well, let's see, do you get us?
Yeah.
How does, how does it affect, how does it affect, um, school year only support staff contracts?
School year, well, how would you say that?
It's, uh, the school year only support staff contracts. So those support staff who work only in the school.
I'm wondering too, is, um, is this, is there gonna be a change to the school day?
But does there change the school hours?
School, yeah, school hours, length of day. Cause the length of day is a little bit as traditional as our agricultural calendar.
And I think it probably just importantly, will this, how will this impact twenty-first century contracts? In terms of, and I'm not saying employing anyways more and more and more, but the work of the teacher could be dramatically altered positively by this. So how does that reflect contract language?
I had a question, um, I thought about after we, I mean, and my understanding of teachers is that, you know, they often have to do a lot of their own credentialing things during the summer, the professional development.
Mm-hmm.
Is this, are they gonna be able to do that now in the interim sessions or are they still gonna be required to do that?
That's a good question.
And that's a good question. How do we figure out to do that without like a paragraph?
How will this defend, affect?
Professional development.
Well, teacher recertification.
Another question I would have from Bruce Murdo's lens is how will this type of schedule impact, uh, campus-wide improvements? Because right now that's done in the window, as we further compress the summer, how are we gonna replace the line from the boiler room to the main building? I mean, how does that happen now and, and other things like that?
Okay, now, what was that again, the school board shovels? How, how would you wanna phrase that?
Yeah, how, how will property services address major work projects?
Major work projects, yeah.
Yeah. Property services.
Property. P R. Property services.
B R services.
Uh, B.
Complete major work projects with a condensed summer.
Complete.
Complete.
Major work.
Major.
Cause typically that's.
Work projects.
If you take a walk through here in July, you see everything in the hallways.
Right.
And all over the place.
Right.
Including our desks.
Indeed.
Um, are all the intercessions voluntary? Cause I mean, you know, part of it's, we're talking about, you know, reteaching and student intervention, but if it's voluntary and I don't wanna learn math, I wanna go do something else.
And are you referring to students or staff?
Teachers, teachers, everybody, yeah.
Would there be publicly funded childcare slash programs during these extended breaks? Intercessions.
Yeah, I'm thinking about what you said, but also a question came up was not only that, but one of the things you're talking about intercession is that, um, they might be able to do camps during these times or they might be able to do field trips during these times. So can we work that into, is, is there gonna be funds available to do childcare slash camps or over the K? Are you okay with that, if you combine those?
Yeah.
Okay.
Will this, will this calendar increase student opportunity and flexibility?
Student, I'm gonna do it or do you?
Yeah, go ahead.
What number am I on, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight.
Will this calendar increase student opportunity and flexibility?
Increase?
Yes.
Student. Opportunity and flexibility?
Correct.
I'll throw a radical one in here. Why aren't Saturdays and Sundays considered in this calendar?
Why aren't Saturdays and Sundays school days?
Just consider, I, this is, this is, yes, we're looking at adjusting it, you know, starting school earlier in August and ending later in June. Why don't we consider using Saturdays and Sundays as educational days?
Um, what's it look like for K eight? I mean, it's, if I can envision it for a high school student who is sort of a lot more autonomous and can sort of guide themselves to, you know, opportunities, but it's a little fuzzier for me for like a third grader.
So like how is this calibrated for the different ages?
Yeah, yeah.
Good question.
I mean, it's, you know.
That's number thirty. Let's go with that, F number thirty.
Should I say different grades or different age groups?
I'd go age group, so we can get away from grade. That was talked about at the carousel tonight. I like that.
Does this, I'm assuming, um, what's, what's not in black is a school day? So we won't have any of those kind of like, like parent conferences? Will still be a school day in all our schools?
I'm assuming that those now fall under intercession.
Yeah, that's, I guess it's. I mean, when we do a calendar right now and like ADL closes for a parent, that, is that part of the one seventy? Cause we don't do one seventy-five, don't we?
The one seventy-seven.
Yeah. So.
I compared this to the current calendar and it looked to me like this new one has more black days, like days blocked out, so maybe.
Uh, how will implement weather policy be effective?
There is no implement weather scheduled for twenty-fourteen.
That's right.
I was gonna say.
Only during intercession.
Yeah.
Only during the intercession.
I mean, I, that's the question, right? Do we, if we have a snow day on January twenty-ninth, does that mean February twenty-third? You know, it's, it's like just how, how is, what's the effect of snow days?
And how does it affect student transportation?
It's, yeah.
So we're gonna have buses running all those black days when we wouldn't otherwise.
If you have intercession.
That's a very good question.
What was it?
How is student transportation affected by?
Yes, it, yeah.
But only in Essex.
But we're a walking district.
On the jump.
Well, no, but we have, I mean, Essex Town considerations, the Grand Isle bus, the Georgia bus.
So how will student transportation be affected?
Roosevelt.
They all come to me.
They all come.
One of the suggestions, Jack, can I borrow it just for a second? Uh, one of the suggestions from the communications committee was that they resubmit this out. I thought it might even come for tonight and to show like, for example, October twentieth to twenty-fourth, exactly which of those days are intercession versus just off.
Yeah.
Um, that way I think they might address a lot of, because they're not all intercessions. Cause like you have the opportunity to go through intercession or you don't. Um, some just may not take that off, not take any advantage at all of any intercessions. Uh, and that's what, what my concern was, people are gonna look at this as being, oh, these are all these days off. Well, they're really not if some of these are intercessions, but then can you mandate intercessions? And if you do, then now you're over the one seventy-five. But I think if they actually put, uh, in there, uh, you know, again, these are just drafts. Um, okay, this, these two days this week, that's an intercession. That might also address the transportation kind of issue, but still a legitimate question. Cause, okay, what's gonna happen during those two days?
And who's gonna manage?
You're increasing your transportation days.
Yeah, regardless.
Regardless of when they happen or how many they happen.
Who's gonna manage administratively all of this kind of like intercession? I mean, it sounds like administratively, it's gonna be a lot to. I mean, it sounds like administratively, it's gonna be a lot to manage. Who's opting in, who's opting out, what they're doing.
So you wanna put that down as a question?
Power school.
I, I'm sensitive to the time, it being ten minutes to ten.
We have to break this into three.
Okay, so, so what's our process for, for? I wanna, I wanna keep picking the can down the field here, you know?
I think we can do this part pretty quickly.
Okay.
Is, we just need to look at these questions, and I think we already know that probably one of the three kind of like grouping topics would probably be like cost.
Okay.
So.
Right.
So to make this simpler, sorry, these are not the kind that like stick.
No, you really have to identify specifically which one's cost.
Oh, I know.
I mean, that would help, but if that's what everybody thinks, if that just seems to be a common theme based upon...
Yeah, that's one.
I mean, we can certainly do that and verify that a little bit.
Let's do it that way.
Cost, management and effect on families.
Yeah.
Cost management.
I was thinking, instead of, I'm with you on the first two, but I'm wondering if that last one is, um, is the educational value? And educational value could be a theme that has both positives and negatives.
Yeah.
How about educational quality question?
Value is...
I, I think it's the, I think the va- it's the value proposition.
At values.
You know, with...
One of the words you pulled around.
Changes costs.
Yeah.
What is the value to that cost? And then, so, and then management, the one that you were raising, Aaron, at the end is, how do you manage this all as far as intercession?
Well, that's, that's one of the big words that came up, what is the impact? What is the impact on cost, what is the impact on families, what is the impact on?
I think those are, those are all, I mean, those are all, that's the impact statement right there. I mean, impact, cost, value and management. And those both have detract, you know, they, those columns aren't, those are themes, but within that theme, it could be, you know, positive and negatives are some of these questions we've raised.
Or how does the family manage the change? How does the school manage the change?
Well, co- like, I'd look at costs as being like one of the questions of daycare costs or childcare. You know, there, what's the cost of this calendar? Well, part of that is the, the cost to the family.
Then it could also be cost in time, um, cost as you could do that for...
Yeah. So, so that's why I was thinking, those are the bigger themes of impact, and then there's a whole, you know, you can have sort of subsets within them.
And the management came, I know when the leadership team did their big thing, and after I learned more about this, I agree, was logistics, which is part of management.
Yeah.
Exactly how it's gonna happen.
You know, as we've talked about this, intercessions, I would think you'd actually have to design a calendar that was somewhere in the like one sixty-five range so that you had ten intercession days.
If you wanna cost neutral, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Which, which reduces direct instructional time.
Right, that, so it, so it's cost neutrality is a little, is tough to get to. Unless you were doing these more as remedials, which we have sometimes contract time to build in, sort of to bring in the summer school kind of model. And then on the other side of that, did some kind of like pay to play. I mean, for intercessions, could you have pay to play? Could someone come in and do a one-week seminar on Japanese culture? Or welding, or clay, you know?
Which goes to, which goes to Ryan's question of are these mandatory? With this compulsory intercession, because you know, you have a D minus in a grade.
Right.
Oh, so it's got, so Ryan, how do you think this would affect negotiations? I mean, are they going, now, teachers now, a week before, a week after, right, plus all these intercessions, is that, do you think that will? Cause one of the questions also came out was how will the teachers' union
Yeah.
perceive these changes? And will, you know, will there be cooperation amongst community, you know, and all that, so it's...
I was real, I was, I was expecting to see something different. I was expecting to see a little bit more of the private school model.
That, that's honestly what I was anticipating.
Like a jan term. Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And you could have an extended learning opportunity in that jan time.
Yeah.
And then you've got this clump of time where families can take their vacations, there, there's a big clump of time around the holidays. It's just a little more...
Cause right now, oh, it's, it's all dependent on when plane tickets are available. They could take the first week and then the week of vacation, or they could take three days on the front end and two days on the back end and...
Yeah, that's, so that, yeah, so you must see a lot of kids that are...
Very significant.
Twelve hundred, two thousand dollars difference.
And I say that understanding full well why.
Mm-hmm.
But it leads to absences.
This is the only wing that's air-conditioned, right? And then we've got a couple of, you've got the main office and then we've got some computer labs.
That's pretty much it.
Yeah.
And underneath.
Yeah.
And over at the, at the ring.
Are we done with the?
We're done messaging.
All right. So, thank you for, I, I was, uh, uh, this was a lot of time, but time well spent. And I know that, that our, we're working hard on getting the right message out and what are those key themes that we need to establish for this to be a successful?
Good start, yeah.
Good start here, so. Ask a question?
You may.
That's not necessarily for that, but, I mean, this is obvi- this is a draft, right? I mean, this is the first time we've seen this, right? I mean, I think, my only concern is that we're building a message around a draft. You know, I mean, I don't wanna start communicating our message when I don't have some of the questions I, like, some of the logistical questions. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, I want, I wanted, I wanted some answers to some of those questions before I'll start selling it, you know what I mean?
There definitely needs to be a lot more discussion about this first draft before we officially...
Right.
And again, one of the purposes of this exercise was to show you the framework in which we are perhaps to use for other decisions. It just happened to be convenient.
Yeah.
It was during a time where thinking about a calendar, so it was not to solve the calendar problem.
Yeah. It'd be interesting to, to, to take this framework and, and maybe to see what Mary Jane, how, how we'd be phrasing these questions through that appreciative inquiry lens.
Well, and also, as Chitting County principals, we talked about this in March when we met, we met actually at Park Street. And certainly the questions you generate could be based on the specificity of the school. For example, I know Amy Melencamp, Principal Burlington High School, had some real reservations about summer.
Reduced?
Well, no, well, yeah, but the point being, school in late June and early August, you might as well have it on North Beach.
Yeah.
Cause you just walk out the door and go down the road. So there's, there's some other interesting issues that arrive just based on where you're located.
Sure. Geographic considerations.
Yes, exactly.
Have we done the, what, this process with staff? Are we gonna do this process with staff?
Yes. You could have different stakeholder groups.
Cool.
Yep, this, this one was from, through the lens of a community member.
Yeah.
I mean, not that teachers aren't also, but I mean, we can have something focused at staff.
Not, not just thinking about what they're thinking about, but having them ask, like, do this process.
Well, we, we did that with the, like I said, the Chitting County principals, I'm on the bill with the leadership team, and also the nine-page document. As principals, we looked at that and, and read through it with like critical lenses of, okay, so what are we already doing in our schools? And that was actually very reaffirming.
Yeah.
In terms of a lot of the things we're doing that are recommended were up the gate on, so we felt good about that.
And as far as a staff perspective, you would really get to job functions and how change in calendar would affect...
Contract.
Not only their contract, but the, the nuts and bolts of what they do and how hard they work to achieve those things.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the, that's the perspective that I would get from my registrar or from, or from my student services coordinators. That they would really, they would personalize it, which would give you a real flavor for what unintended consequences might be out there.
And student feedback would be interesting.
I, I would get that, I would, this is just my impression of where my kids were reading about it, to then seeing this. I think this is, this is, I think this ends up being better than what they were thinking.
Yep.
You know, this idea, it, it, it's interesting, it's just a draft, but it, it poses some interesting things. And it, and what I'm trying to do is try to appreciate it without my preconceived notions of what I thought it was gonna be. So, um, that's sort of a little hard, but it's, um, you know, looking at it, it's not, you know, it was a lot of that, like, year-round was sort of the concern, what, what is this telegraphing? And then, starting much earlier and going much later. Well, this isn't, this isn't the much.
Not so much.
Yeah, so.
Yep.
I thought that was a good exercise. Thank you for leading that for us.
Good. So let's move on then. Uh, we have the consent agenda.
Which was added to.
I'm sorry, which was added to?
From the original org notes, it was the school calendar was added.
D H S C T E.
It was a follow-up email that went out separate of the org notes?
I do, uh, yes, unfortunately, I, I do recall that, but I don't have that with me. So we have the consent agenda of approving the, the minutes of our March eighteenth meeting, of proving the warrants and the school calendar.
Yes.
As these warrants are making their way around, uh, the table, right? Do we have a, a motion or a, a motion to approve the warrants, or is there a item that needs to be pulled?
I move to approve them.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, so, motion to approve the consent agenda by Aaron, second by Gary. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Future agenda items, I had taken notes tonight on, on things that we need to address going forward here. Let me, so let me give you what I had, and then I wanna make sure I capture everyone else's thought. One is, we have the V S B A code of conduct that we'll come back and address. I expect to have some documentation flowing out on that so we can look at it.
That was in the org notes.
It was, but, but we pulled it for...
Right.
For tonight, that's why I'm saying it needs to come back.
Yep.
For, uh, for a future agenda item. We also have, uh, Principal Reardon a N I S C report.
Yep.
That will be, uh, the board will be interested in hearing what's going on there.
You'll get the report, it'll be around fifty-seven pages.
Yeah. Uh, the third thing I had, Brian, was our, our continued status on our visioning.
Yeah, and, yep, most likely some kind of proposal presentation or review.
Right. And the, the last thing that I had were, uh, the defining when our planning session slash meeting dates would be. And that's part of the Google documents that the superintendent said he would support us with. But we, we need to define when those, when those meeting dates are going to occur. Is, are there any other future planning items that we need to discuss? Teacher appreciation?
Yep, teacher appreciation we should add for the, I think, the next meeting. I think we pretty much decided, I think, to do, instead of kind of doing what we did last year, we talked about kind of doing a kickoff announcement and then actually doing the event on that last day of school. Do you remember that discussion we had at the last, was the last meeting we talked about that? But we can formalize that conversation more, I think, at our next, and I can bring some more information.
All right. Anything else?
Contracts? You need to mention?
What, I, yes, but I forget what the notes said on the, we have some additional teacher contracts that are...
It was, um, leave requests and contracts.
Please note the contracts, leave requests, retirement notice and professional appointments in the front packet.
All right, so that's, we have some additional...
Please have board sign the contracts. Please hand out the leave requests and retirement notice and recommendations for professional appointments.
All right, so we have some professional appointments, leave requests and contracts that need to be signed.
Did you have to sign those?
I, I tell you, it would, I have no problem if we wanna discuss these further with administration. And I will take them and be the, and sign for, all they require is just one board member to sign, right?
I can get them if, for move to do that. I mean, they have to be approved before I need to sign them, correct?
They, they, they should be approved before they can just be signed, so...
He's saying he's gonna talk to it.
Those are just hand-delivered?
Those are just hand-delivered this evening. I don't think anyone's had a chance to really vet them and so forth. So maybe what, what I would do is I will entertain a motion to let the, the chairman enter into a discussion with administration about these, ask any questions and, and sign them. Do we have a motion to, for that?
I'll move.
Move by Aaron.
That Jack will talk to administration about the added?
Uh, con- teacher contracts, leave requests, retirement notice and recommendations for professional appointment. You may. And if...
Second.
So we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So that motion carries five to nothing. I will follow on the discussions and, and report back to the board what, what the decision was on, on these. And I plan to do that in the next forty-eight hours, okay? Anything else besides for future agenda items?
Did the board wanna hear from the Life College Career Learning Community in the next couple of months? Not necessarily the next one, but before we break, to get a note.
Absolutely. Uh, that might not be a May item.
That's fine.
That may be a, a June item, but...
That's fine.
You're absolutely right.
Just to keep it on the radar.
Right.
So, Jack, these are, um, handouts that have enough copies for the entire board?
I'm trusting, I have not looked one iota to know what's in there and what's, what's not, so...
So, I think it's, um, I, I think, just so that, otherwise, there's no follow-up for us to ever see the documentation that we've just authorized you to sort of do, so I would feel comfortable if we just at least hand out, we provide the handouts to the...
That's fine, if, 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 if you got the right count and, and it's there or...
Oh.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing no other, uh, and so there's a couple of these that are coming around, I'm sorry, Aaron. No other future agenda items, then, uh, I'll move this, I, I actually, I'll, I'll go into recess until I know what the status is of administration participating in our executive session. I'll just step over and see what's, what's going on and, uh... Okay, so we're, we'll, we'll go into recess at, uh, ten oh seven and, uh, come back for a, a, uh, executive session, okay?